All right. Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. Appreciate you all coming in person. We also have a number of folks online, so when we get into questions, we'll prioritize questions in the room and then folks have the ability to ask questions. If you're online as well, so we'll try to balance as we go through articles and different sections, questions that we have, but this is the annual town meeting forum that we do every year. Within the last couple of weeks leading up to town meeting to give voters an opportunity to review the warrant if you have particular questions about certain articles. I do have a lot of slides prepared tonight. Some of them will go through quickly as they're more regular. Sort of annual articles that we consider. And then some of them obviously are specific to this year, new initiatives, zoning bylaws. And things like that. So as we go through, don't be shy to raise your hand. We have two microphones set up. So feel free to come on up to the microphone. If there's something I say or talk about that you want more information about. This is really an opportunity to get as much information as possible before going into town meeting. On Monday, April 7th. So we're looking forward to it. A lot of work. Town boards, town staff, residents, volunteers. Have put a lot of work into getting the warrant together as they do every year. So I just want to express my gratitude to the entire team here at Town Hall and all town departments and volunteers, board and committee members do a lot of behind the scenes work to get prepared for town meeting. Every year. So we do have a number of town staff here tonight, too. If there's specific questions. I usually do the best I can to answer questions as as they come up. But if if needed, we'll call up specific staff members if if questions do arise that I'm unable to provide. Information about. And then, you know, we do have a little bit less than two weeks up to town meeting. If there's further information, always offer an opportunity between now and April 7th to come back to Town Hall or send you more follow up information if we don't have it betterly available. This evening. So again, just appreciate everyone coming tonight. We also were joined by a select board member, Leslie Sandberg. So thanks for coming and representing the select board. All right. So as I said, I'm gonna go through some of the slides quicker than others. Obviously stop me if there are particular questions. And we'll just go through them as we we typically do. Article one, prior year bills. This is a recurring article we have each year. It does require a town meeting vote to pay bills from the prior fiscal year. The total this year is just over thirty one thousand. And that is coming from surplus funds and a benefits line. So Article two is the FY two thousand twenty six operating budget. So that's the operating budget for the town that would take effect this July 1st. Through June 30th of two thousand twenty six. The operating budget is made up of six different divisions. But it's presented as a single motion. In the back of the warrant, there's the budget summary that identifies each departmental. Budget item. Any town meeting voter can ask a question about individual budget. Line items and a motion to divide the question would be required to vote on any individual budget. Item separately. These are the different divisions from general government, finance, public safety, public works and public services. That's one through five. And then division six is the public school budget. You can see. Obviously, going at a town meeting, you'll have access to the town meeting booklet that will have all of these, most of these slides and information that you can review. And of course, the warrant is available online and there's copies. Here as well, if you can't see the slides well. But you can see the FY twenty five, the current fiscal year total budget by division. And then you can see what's proposed for the fiscal year coming up, two thousand twenty six, and then the percentage change. So the FY twenty five budget is at thirty seven million and the FY twenty six budget is forty one million eight hundred thousand. Going to talk a little bit about some of the budget drivers, things that are increasing the budget and having the biggest impact on the on the budget year over year. So typically, the biggest driver is personnel expenses. So the vast majority of the town budget goes to operating the town government, and that is personnel. We're a government that provides services on a daily basis, everything from police, fire, DPW. Recreation, the council on aging. And obviously, that comes with an expense. And so the increase in personnel expenses alone between the two fiscal years, FY twenty five and twenty six. Is just under two point seven million, an increase of about eighteen point five percent. And then I'll get into this in a bit, but of that increase, the vast majority is within both the fire and police budgets. So public safety departments really driving the increase in personnel. There's also an increase just under two million in debt service, which is in the finance division. And so while the increase appear significant, it isn't a major driver of the budget, given its offset by debt exclusions that town meeting body has voted. So with an increase in debt service comes an increase in a revenue source in the budget as well. And so when you combine the increase in debt service with the increase in wages, you get just about ninety eight percent of the increase in the budget between twenty five and twenty six. Yes?
Department had made a spreadsheet of all the debt.
Yep.
But we still owed on it.
Yep.
And then we were voting on things that were going to be added to that spreadsheet the following. Never seen that again. I don't remember when it happened. I don't know how much trouble it is for the finance committee. To do something like that, but it. Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just said that, wow. That previously, the finance committee had given us a spreadsheet of what was owed, what was left on that debt. When we were going to finish paying it off, and we then had that as a reference. To see what we were adding this new year to that debt. And I was wondering if the finance committee could make that a standard.
Yeah, so it will be in the, it is in the town meeting booklet every year. And so the booklet.
It is.
Yes. So after the finance committee's opening letter in the booklet, there's a debt summary that goes by year and when debt is coming on and then falling off.
Okay.
And so that will be provided in the in the booklet.
Thank you.
So you'll be able to refer to that.
Thank you.
And separate from the operating budget, I think the the questioner just now was referring to debt. Mostly debt exclusion, so not operating budget projects that the town has bonded for via debt exclusions. Like the police station or Modifield or other bigger multimillion dollar capital projects where the town takes on twenty or thirty year debt. And so I think that's what they were referring to, which is separate from the operating budget. The, again, the biggest drivers, a couple of years ago, the town implemented what's called a classification and compensation study. To make salaries more competitive, to increase retention and recruitment for the town, and that has paid big dividends in terms of retention with town staff and department heads and managers. And just everyday staff that work for different departments. The fire department, I'll get into more specifics, but just to give folks some context. The personnel budget in the fire department just a few years ago in fiscal year two thousand twenty two was eight hundred and seventy one thousand. And the proposed personnel budget for FY twenty six is just over four million. So over the last four fiscal years, that's an increase of three point two million dollars in the fire department alone, and that's due to eighteen new full time employees since fiscal year two thousand twenty two. Over the last couple of years, folks probably remember Lower Cape ambulance transitioned away from Province Town and Truro. And so the town was obviously in a position to bring on EMTs and medics. And we've begun and are implementing the transition from an all call volunteer fire department to what's called accommodation department. And so you have a number of full time career personnel that are ideally dual dual certified, dual trained firefighter medics and firefighter EMTs and then supplemented and backed up by call volunteers. And so we still do have a decent contingent of call volunteers that back up the full time career personnel. And I'll get into the fire department in just a bit. So classification study, the fire department. And then the town doesn't negotiate with two collective bargaining units, one within the police department. And EPBA. And then the second is Ask Me, which are most of our administrative staff and our DPW staff. Here at Town Hall. And there's obviously a cost to the collective bargaining agreements. Just to give folks some context, as you look at the increase in in wages and personnel costs of the town. Province Town's median household income is just over ninety five thousand. Based on our housing needs assessment, the annual household income needed to afford the median price condo in Province Town is two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Some more data points from the needs assessment, sixty four percent of Province Town government employees consider themselves housing insecure and most can only afford to pay an estimated fifteen hundred dollars a month. In rent. And forty eight percent of town employees report being cost burdened or severely cost burdened, spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And so as folks think about town employees and investing in town employees, obviously, it's important for us to have a healthy government and municipality that provides the services that our residents rely on day in and day out. But like any organization, be it public or private. It's expensive to operate an organization of this magnitude. Public safety. And so going into this year's town meeting, we do have an operating within the operating budget, we do have a deficit. Which essentially means that our expenses projected for FY twenty six are greater than our projected revenues coming in, and that's largely because of the growth in the fire department. And so just again, the context, just over a twenty four month period going from two full time people in the fire department to twenty four proposed in the FY twenty six budget. And so in Article two for the operating budget, we are proposing an operating override to cover the cost to complete the transition toward the accommodation department within the fire department. As well as some increased costs within the police department. I know I provided a little bit of context, but the proposed FY twenty six budget for the fire department is four point seven million. Just over a million dollar increase over this current fiscal year. This again will ensure that we continue the comment, continue the transition towards accommodation department. One that provides around the clock fire and EMS coverage. Three hundred and sixty five days a year, again supplemented by our call volunteers. We're currently staffed at twenty full time career personnel, and this budget proposes four additional full time positions. As well as expand rescue standby to operate year round as well, which currently operates only two hundred and seventy days a year. And with more full time people and with the transition, we also need to budget appropriately for increased equipment and training needs. So why does the fire department need more staff? And how does this improve the services that residents receive from the town? Currently, as I said, the fire department has twenty full time staff supplemented by twenty six trained call firefighters and another eight who are in the process of of getting their certification and training. Obviously, with our aging population and seasonal population swings, staffing adequately for our community is a challenge with the current number of full time staff. So right now, we have five full five full time staff per shift that provide twenty four seven, three sixty five coverage that staffs two ambulances. Or one ambulance plus one fire engine. Funding for additional full time positions will put six full time staff on per shift. And allow for three staffed ambulances or two ambulances plus one fire engine per shift. And in the summer, this plan would also allow for staffing up to four ambulances or three ambulances plus one fire engine per shift. And so just over a year ago, or just to provide some comparison. Before we started this transition, we had the call majority call firefighter division. And then we had the Lower Cape ambulance contract. And so we were providing those services. Under this plan, we now have dedicated firefighters in our station twenty four hours a day, all year round, supplemented by the call volunteers. And we also now have the ambulance EMS service in house. And so the town is receiving ambulance receipts, which is offsetting the increase in the budget. But this provides a service that this town has not had in the past, and many other towns have made this transition and have done it. You know, years prior to Province Town and, you know, we thank the members of our department for getting us to where we are. Today, our chief Jimmy Roderick, our deputy chief Othain Rance. A number of call firefighters and then the number of full time people that we've brought on over the last two years. The one thing I would say is on the fire department, two years ago in the FY twenty four budget, so two town meetings ago. There was an operating override to bring on our first eight full time firefighters, which this body supported last year in the budget. We did not ask for another operating override. We were able to absorb an additional eight full time people to bring us up to sixteen. By using the money we used to pay Lower Cape into the general fund budget to mitigate having to go back to the voters for an operating override. But given the increase in personnel that's needed now. It's it's now time for us to go back to the voters and ask them to consider an increase in the fire department budget. Similar to the fire department, but obviously not as significant as the increase in the police department budget. Increasing just over, just under five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty five thousand. And this is a combination of an increase in overtime, an increase due to the contract and regional dispatch that is going into effect, I think, next week. So in the police department, unlike previous years, we have been able to recruit and retain a full complement of both year round officers and seasonal officers. We have begun providing seasonal summer housing for our community service officers that you see along Commercial Street. And so now that we have a full complement of officers, we have less excess personnel funds at our disposal to support overtime expenses. And so there is a slight increase in overtime within the police department proposed in the FY twenty six budget. Which allows us to have the three patrol cars on shift that we typically have, and then also invest in things like bike patrol and foot patrol. And more traffic enforcement, both on Commercial Street and and Bradford. Any questions on the budget, Dennis?
Can you explain regional dispatch? How does that differ from dispatch?
Yep. So right now, we have one dispatcher at the police department. That is one dispatcher per shift, which is dispatching all calls. And so over the last couple of months, Province Town and Eastham, I think, are the last two communities. Or the most recent communities to join with the Barnstable County Sheriff's Regional Dispatch Program. And so it provides more capacity. Instead of having just one dispatcher on shift, there is a central dispatch facility. Within the sheriff's department that provides eight dispatchers per shift. So we still have our dispatcher at the police department. We still have the non emergency line. And we dispatch, we still dispatch some calls. But working directly with the fire department, we now have capacity, because right now, if you just have one person on, there's multiple calls. It's difficult sometimes for the one dispatcher to they have to pass it to a civilian that's not necessarily trained in dispatch and emergency response. And so we had a presentation before the select board and the sheriff's office come in and talk about the the benefits and recommended by both the chief and the deputy chief at the time and got some input from the existing dispatch employees. And so it doesn't result in any layoffs. It just sort of supplements the the coverage and capacity that we have to dispatch police and fire.
Hi, my name is Robert Crook. I'm a CPA. I live here in town. I'm also a certified financial forensic. I moved here in October. Just a couple of statistics that I saw that just are totally disconnecting. If ninety five thousand dollars is average income of what full time people who live here year round make. Yet it takes two hundred and fourteen thousand to live in a median house. That's that's incongruent. You know, I I'm looking at Commercial Street and just the number of commercial properties that are for sale for over six, seven, eight, nine months. There's some massive changes happening in the town. And just given the political environment and the economy, what's going to happen this summer? The town really needs to address this disconnect and figure out how to make it work. For the people that work here. I mean, you're having to increase the budgets dramatically just to provide services. And I it's, I I don't know how you're ever going to balance a budget. So thanks.
Yeah. So I mean, the town's budget's required to be balanced each year. And so the proposal to balance the budget is the operating override. And I think you bring up a great point. I think that was the the intention of the needs assessment really is to look at. I was looking specifically at, you know, the median income and then looking at average salaries for town employees. And then the median condo, which I think that was what I referred to was over eight hundred thousand. If you're looking at the median single family home. It's about one point two. And so there certainly is a disconnect, and I know we'll get to it later in the warrant, but a couple of significant housing projects intended to reach the people in this community that need housing stability the most. And so we're under construction currently for sixty five units of year round affordable housing. Up on Jerome Smith Road, you can see the structure going up. It's going to house over a hundred people, affordable year round rentals. And then in the warrant, we have twenty six shank painter affordable ownership in the barracks for seasonal worker housing and also some year round rentals as part of that project. So you know, the town can control what it's a control of. It's why we've purchased private properties over the last couple of years to land bank property for future affordable community housing development. But it's hard for us, you know, other than means via zoning or the property we own to regulate exactly, you know, what people are doing on their private property. But obviously, we use zoning and other municipal measures. But I think your point is well taken.
Is there a hiring distance limit?
Sorry, say that again.
Hiring distance limit for the fire department for the chief and the officers and the personnel?
So for the chief, we still have in the charter that they have to be a resident of Province Town or Truro.
Okay.
Or Wellfleet. I think the charter changed last year brought it to brought it to Wellfleet, but it hasn't, it has to go through the legislature and that hasn't taken effect yet. So right now, the chief needs to be a resident of, I think it's Province Town, actually. Yeah.
And is there, and and for regular personnel, is there any any hiring distance? Or do you give priority to people who are more who are closer?
Yeah, I think we always, I mean, fire department, police department or other departments, I think we try to give priority to Province Town residents or those that are closer. In the fire department model now, obviously, having called in the fire department model now, obviously having call volunteers in town, and we have a number in Truro historically is really important. But the full time members of the fire department are typically doing two twenty four hour shifts a week. And so they're they're at the station. And so they could live in a different part of the Cape and work full time for Province Town because they're bunking at the at the firehouse at the ready to respond to a call.
And and how many personnel in, well, let's say from October to May, in in the station at one time, how many, how many people are in this?
Under, under this proposal, we'd have up to five people in the off season, and we'd have six people twenty four seven in the summer.
And they'd all be obligated to respond to rescue calls, I take it? If there are rescue calls?
Yes.
Okay, because that's sort of a concern because it's three hours to Hyannis. So you could end up with nobody in the station pretty easily.
Yeah, and that's one of the concerns with this is particularly in the summer months is having enough staff to have ambulances staffed and then also a fire engine. Obviously, there's mutual aid that will come in in the event of a structured fire. We've seen that you know, many times in town over the years. But for us, it's important. We have the longest ride to a hospital in the entire state. And so typically, an ambulance is tied up for three hours, as you said. An hour there, an hour dealing with the with the with the interaction with the hospital and then the hour back to to Province Town. So it's important for us while they're on the road. And we've had days even in February where we have multiple ambulances heading to Hyannis, and we need to alert other towns that we might need coverage in those times. So you know, budgeting for worst case scenario would mean we spend a lot of money. And so that's why, I mean, it's still been important for us to maintain the call department to what it is and increase training. But it's also, you know, the transition was also inevitable. And so some of the changes over the last year or two sort of accelerated the the pace of the of the transition. And I I do think that we are heading in the right direction. We've had a lot of great feedback from, you know, community members, residents, and, you know, we had a number of full time staff and call volunteers at the last select board meeting talking about the transition. So and I know change can be difficult, but, you know, I think this is really about public safety for the for the town.
And the call volunteers are drilling, act, are they actively meet and they're drilling and they're they're?
Yeah, and the and the percentage of them that have received their firefighter one and two training has gone up over the last several months and
Right, okay.
Yeah. Just another piece before we get to Article three on the budget, we want to be as transparent as possible why why the budget is going up, what the operating override consists of, and then the estimated tax impact. And so if you own property in town, you can sort of do the calculation of twenty six dollars eighty cents per hundred thousand dollars assessed value. If your house at the median nine hundred and seventy nine, that's two hundred and sixty dollars per year. And then just the caveat that those year on residence property owners that have the residential tax exemption, that would be the increase would be less than those that don't have the residential tax exemption. Article three, this is a recurring article, Cape Cod Regional Tech High School Assessments. Article four are the enterprise fund budgets. And so typically in the past, you would just have the water enterprise budget and the wastewater or sewer enterprise fund budget. This year we have four enterprise budgets. And so town meeting over the last couple of years, last year, town meeting approved the transition of McMillan Pier Corporation to the enterprise fund or to its own enterprise fund, and also approved the transition of the airport from an airport fund into a enterprise fund. And so we now have four enterprise funds, water, sewer, the pier and the airport. They all require town meeting approval. Essentially, an enterprise fund is designed to be self sufficient. And so revenues that each of those funds bring in, you know, water rates, sewer charges, pier revenues theoretically and typically cover the operating expenses for those departments, both in terms of the budget year round, but mostly also in terms of the capital projects. And we'll see that in the CIP. Rachel?
This is kind of a generic question because I'm out of the loop, especially with the airport. I know that there's been a problem because I don't know whether we have when I see Mr. Richter who's wants to have the funk planes, but that's not certain yet. So my question, because it was always a bone of contention with the town airport commission and commissions have more authority than the committees. Their problem was that the airlines were privately owned. And the town, because we were grateful to have that mode of travel also, would kick in for some things, but they were always upset that a lot of our tax money had to be fund the lighting for all the runway and all the facility itself. And they were didn't want to have to pay back the town for any part of that. So what was the status with that now, if whatever happens at the airport? Do we still have to pay for some of the things that didn't seem like we should have to pay for? Like lights for the runway and all that?
Yeah, so just I'll try to be as succinct as possible, but the airport is town property. It's a town facility and town infrastructure. And so in the annual capital budget, we do include investments in the airport, improving lighting, the structure. We are currently negotiating with the National Park Service, a longer, long term lease to operate the airport on national parkland. And the operation of the airport, you know, when I got here four years ago, Cape Air employed the the airport manager, so sort of worked with the town, but was technically a an employee of Cape Air. And so in most municipal airports, the, you know, the town or the city would own the airport and then lease a desk and lease space to a carrier like Cape Air. We were unique in that Cape Air was essentially operating the airport on behalf of the town, and they were employing the airport manager. And so sort of an inherent conflict of interest where you have your largest tenant essentially managing the airport for you. And they were selling the gasoline and all these different things, the jet fuel. And so what we've done over the last two years, particularly in light of Cape Air's decision last summer, is the town now employs the airport manager, and so they're no longer an employee of Cape Air. And Cape Air has made the decision to go from our signatory airline, which means they would operate year round to to just operating seasonally. And one thing I updated the select board on a couple of days ago was that the airport commission of the town are both negotiating a new lease with Cape Air. And they would come back in May for seasonal service, but we're also negotiating a lease with another carrier provide more options to consumers and residents of of the area. So it's now more of a town. I mean, it's always been sort of a town facility, and there's been some I don't know what you'd call it, confusion around who runs the airport on a daily basis, but the town is responsible for the space itself, but we do recruit some of that money through lease payments and the airlines need to pay landing fees. The private planes need to pay landing fees and we now sell jet fuel, which Cape Air used to do, which is a good revenue source for the town.
Well, thank you for the answer because the system changed and you answered all that. But it was a serious problem back then when we had to pay all those loans.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
So like I said, going from two funds to to four enterprise funds. And this year, the new ones again are the pier and the and the airport. Article five is the public education government access. This is a recurring article. This is money paid in to the town through Comcast bills, a small percentage that goes to public access and funds Province Town community television. Article six, we always like to see these types of articles. So the this actually rescinds a prior borrowing authorization authorizations that town meeting has approved. And so these were prior debt exclusions. And so you can see the breakdown. There's four articles. A couple in twenty fifteen, a couple in twenty eighteen. You'll see the original amount authorized, a hundred and five thousand dollar project. We're rescinding unspent balance of eight thousand. There was a four point nine million dollar project at the pier. We're rescinding authorization for three point eight of the four point nine. Seven point three rescinding just over half a million, and then a million dollar fire truck replacement, returning a hundred and fifty thousand. So rescinding nearly five million dollars in borrowing that this body approved in Article six. And I think, as we typically say, when we're asking voters for authorization or debt exclusions, or really capital and projects in general, is we do do everything we can to apply for grants and and lower the cost at the end of the day. Paul? Yes. Article seven, standalone article, courtesy float replacement. The pier has been working with a consultant on doing an analysis of their infrastructure. It found that our courtesy float was cracking and deteriorating, which caused it to bend under the weight of the gangway. They recommended to the town that we perform temporary repairs. However, the repairs are only getting us so far. The total cost of the courtesy float replacement is a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. The select board did approve a sixty seven thousand dollar transfer from the Harbor Access Gift Fund. And then the remaining eighty thousand dollars is proposed to come from the Waterways Fund. This is not a debt exclusion. This is a standalone article from funds created for the purpose of addressing capital needs like this at the pier. And so this does provide a service to the public. And so Article seven asked voters to approve the transfer from the Waterways Fund of eighty thousand dollars to go towards this project. Yeah. So it's mostly embarkation fees, so whale watches, ferries, passengers typically pay a dollar twenty five or something like that. And then that's paid to the town. And it requires a town meeting authorization to spend from it. If there hadn't been that funding source, it likely would have been in the CIP. That was Article seven. Article eight, capital funding for housing development at twenty six Shang Painter Road. So twenty six Shang Painter is the old, the old site of the police station next to the Methodist Church and the thrift shop across from the fire department headquarters. It's a just over a quarter acre parcel. We have been using it temporarily for seasonal housing for our community service officers within the police department as we work on a development project there. Just about two years ago, the town issued a request for proposal for a focus of middle income housing, housing, given that with three Jerome Smith and the Province Post Project is really focused on the more deeply affordable levels. We also thought it was important to address the missing middle income housing in town. The proposed project at twenty six Shang Painter is forty ownership units. Thirty of the forty units would be what are called below market units. And thirty of the forty would be deed restricted for year round residency. I'll get into, I have a couple of slides on this that gets into the different AMI area median income levels for the different units. But one of the things that popped up in the needs assessment was the interest and demand for ownership in Province Town, not just, again, for those that can afford eight hundred thousand or one point two million that, you know, the ultimate housing security for folks in town is to own a piece of Province Town and be able to build equity. To give you an example, through inclusionary zoning, we do get affordable units online. You know, not a ton, but sometimes we'll get a couple of, a couple a year. We have a private project now at forty four Captain Bertie's that's going to create ten affordable units. But for one affordable unit at eighty or a hundred percent AMI, we had twenty six local families qualify for that lottery and only one unit available. And while many folks are looking for affordable rental housing, there's also just as many folks looking for affordable ownership. And so what the what the town subsidy does here and the select board did vote to make a soft commitment of four million dollars towards a project. It's a total project cost of around twenty one million dollars. And the four million dollar subsidy essentially ensures that thirty of the forty units can be below market and that they're year round deed restricted. And and then Province Town would essentially run the parameters in the lottery for those thirty units. There would be local preference with those units and income qualified. The four million dollar subsidy ask of town meeting body, I just want to clarify, it's not a debt exclusion. The it is a borrowing authorization up to four million dollars. Money from that article would only be issued or borrowed in the event the project is fully financed and permitted. It's not as if a check goes out the door the next day and we hope that the project happens. We work alongside the developer like we have done with the three Jerome Smith project, town meeting approved a three million dollar subsidy for that project. We and then an additional five hundred thousand from CPA, which allowed that project to move through state approval quite quickly. And so what we're proposing for Article eight is that it's funded out of the housing fund and from rooms tax, essentially from rooms tax receipts over the next five years. The town brings in about five million a year in room stacks receipts, which includes traditional hotels, but also short term rentals. And about one point five million dollars a year goes directly into the housing fund to put towards projects like these. So we're not proposing that this is a debt exclusion or increases people's property taxes. That we have this appropriation to allow the developers to secure private financing to advance the planning for this project. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Yeah. So if you if you do a short term renting through one of the platforms, Airbnb or Verbo, you're you automatically are paying, the consumer is typically paying the tax and it goes directly to the state and then the rooms tax is paid to the town in quarters. So each quarter, every three months. So on March thirtieth, we'll get our quarterly payment from the room stacks. And then this this slide here just shows sort of a breakdown. So right now, if you looked at what units are on the market in Province Town. Yep, and then you want to?
And I just
Yeah, go for it.
Everything you're explaining is great. The one thing that I think people need to know, though, is that with this type of housing, there are no state and federal tax credits. So VFW is for people that make eighty percent of AMI and under. So that's about seventy thousand dollars and less for the missing middle, who are people that make more, which are like our teachers, our firefighters, our, you know, servers at the Red End perhaps that make more. We don't get state and federal tax subsidies, so that's why it's a four million dollar investment. I just wanted you all to know that because I think that's important because when people look at the numbers, sometimes they're like, what are you doing? We wanted to give you the rationale behind it.
Yeah, that's a great point. And so if you look at the market now, what we're trying to do is put, but make sure there's units available at prices that wouldn't, that the private market wouldn't provide. And also provide an opportunity for people in affordable housing to move into ownership at potentially different income levels. And so these units would, there would be a number of traditional units at the eighty percent and a hundred percent AMI, which are the more affordable units that we get through inclusionary now. And then there'd be units at a hundred and twenty percent AMI, up to about two hundred and thirty percent AMI. So units priced at two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty, three hundred, three fifty, four hundred, four fifty, up to six hundred and fifty thousand. And then the town has also discussed helping with down payment assistance for local residents when those units go online. And so this is really, as Leslie said, this is sort of a first of its kind project on the Cape or really across the state to invest in homeownership for rental and particularly affordable rentals. There's a lot of state and federal subsidies for these projects. But if the town wants to see a project like this, it's important that we partner with the developer to to make it happen. Jonathan? It's most, it's it's really the focus on people that live in Province Town. And yeah. Mark? Yep. I think we've estimated just over just around a million dollars in terms of the value of the land. The other thing I would mention is it would go from a non taxable property to a taxable property. And so we deal about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of revenue per year in property taxes, which isn't being generated now. And so there is somewhat of an offset, you know, over multiple years. Not to mention the creation of the units and, you know, the benefit there. But obviously, there's a value to the real estate. When you look at the cost per square foot of the units and you compare what they would sell on the market versus what they'll be priced sell on the market versus what they'll be priced at because of the town subsidy, that delta is about 6 million. And so obviously the lower the subsidy or the higher the cost of the, the real estate to the developer, the project has to math out. And so the less subsidy or the more we charge or, you know, for the transaction for the real estate, the higher the, more market units, so less below market units or higher sale prices. And so, you know, we are going to monitor it. And one of the things that the Community Housing Council and the Year on Trust have talked about, and the select board ultimately will have to agree with a grant agreement between the developer and the town if these funds are authorized. Look at that closely. And one of the things, yeah. So one of the things we were trying to look at is if you were looking at the average cost per square foot of a condo in Provincetown, and if you applied that across the board to the 30 below market units at their square footage, the, if they weren't below market or subsidized by the town, what a developer would be able to sell those units for? Delta around $6 million. One of the things that the, we're working with the Community Housing Council and the select board on is the development fee and making sure it's in line with both private and public projects. And so obviously there's a developer fee for affordable housing. But one of the things that we're obviously going to track is with a subsidy like this, we know what the projected revenue is and the projected expenses. And obviously with the threat of tariffs and construction costs, there's going to be some variables. There is a scenario where we authorize up to $4 million and the purchase sales are, construction costs go down and, and the market sales go higher than they're anticipating, the 10 units. It is possible that some of that money come back to the town if, if it reaches a certain percentage of a development fee. And so that's something that would be laid out in a, in a grant agreement between the select board and the developer. But the town would, doesn't want to put itself in a position where you provide a subsidy and then we're essentially just increasing, you know, profit for a developer. It's something that we track and make sure the development fee is in line with projects similar to this. Yep. It never got built, but it got started. So they wouldn't necessarily, I mean, they wouldn't be able to start until their bank. I mean, the vast majority of funding, about 15 million of the 21 is, excuse me, is private bank financing. And so one of the things to get bank financing is to have the commitment from the town. We've had the soft commitment, but it's not a real appropriation. And so the bank obviously needs to see that. But there's a lot of things that happen between, you know, once they get, they have to go through the Cape Cod Commission, they have to go through Planning Board and Conservation Commission. So there's a lot of outputs and opportunities for people to be involved. But one of the things that the town would do in a grant agreement, and if any money is dispersed, it's typically a forgivable loan. And the town has placed mortgages and we work with our town council to make sure that any money provided or subsidized by the town comes back to the town in the event something was to go south. But when you get to a point of construction like we have with three Jerome Smith, and we had, I think there were 13 different lenders and the town was just one of 13 between all the grant programs. We're not putting a shovel in the ground until we know that it's, it's, it's funded. And, you know, with general contractors, you have a locked in price when you do the bids and, you know, there's contingency. So in the $21 million budget, there is a 7% contingency. And then there's a little bit of withering. And so that, that allows us to, you know, if prices for construction come in a little bit higher, go from there. But, you know, in the event the project doesn't happen, then we wouldn't actually borrow or issue the subsidy that Town Meeting approves. And so part of the 4 million. Yeah, we, I mean, we work with town council to, to manage risk and with, not just with this project, but any grant funds that we, we issue and deed restrictions, for example, you know, annual monitoring of those and, and, and things like that. Yeah. Yeah. And we say the $4 million is an authorization under the Community Preservation Act article in the warrant. The Community Housing Council has asked for funds to go towards this project. And that would decrease the $4 million. And so if we do borrowing, it may only be for $2 million over five years. And we pay 400,000 a year from the housing fund. So it's not 4 million plus all of these other obligations. And so a borrowing article allows us to go up to that amount rather than a cash transfer from the capital fund or free cash or something like that.
Hi. Thank you all for doing this and everyone. For the interest of people at home, which is going to be me in about one minute, could people speak at the microphone? Because I don't believe we can hear them.
Yeah, we can.
Otherwise. I mean, obviously you can do what you want, but shout loud if you're going to be sitting. Otherwise, I'll see you guys.
Thanks, John.
Shira Kayvon from Provincetown. Can I ask, there are 10 income levels listed here. Will it be three apartments per level or is it going to be staggered in some way? The 10 would make 30 if there were three assigned at each level.
Yep, it's spread out.
It's spread out. There's, I think there's currently, there's four at 80 and there's another four between 100 and 120. And then the rest are spread out through the rest of the income levels.
We do have our housing page on the website if folks are looking for more information. Presentations that they've made before the select board and, and things like that. Mike?
Hi. Is there any situation where the deed restriction would be lifted? So let's say it doesn't sell. Would that be turned back to the developer so they could sell it to someone out of town? Or turn it into rental property? Or if it doesn't sell, it still retains its deed restriction, the price just lowers in order to get a viable buyer?
Yes. And so assuming the town is making that subsidy, we've monitored the deed restriction.
Yep.
The 10 market units, the 10 market units help subsidize the non-market units.
Correct.
They're predicting that they're going to sell those units at a certain amount. They may not sell those units at a certain amount. There's no deeded parking spaces. It's really one of the first buildings of its kind in Provincetown, right? And so there might be some challenges with that. With the 30 non, non-market units, the prices are sort of set by AMI. And so there's a little less risk with the below market units than there is for the above market units.
Yeah.
And so that's one of the, that's one of the challenges and risks that the developer is, is taking on.
Correct.
In the grant agreement, we're agreeing to the 30 year round occupancy. And so, you know, could there be a scenario where they convert into rentals? It's, it's unlikely. What we, what we probably want to do even starting later this year is start the lottery for the 30 non-market units, which I think would help expedite the, the financing of the project and move it forward. And then the developer would have the right to start pre-selling the, the market units as well to mitigate, to mitigate risk. But, I mean, we would work with town council to monitor the property and that would have to go back before the select board to remove any deed restriction. But typically deed restrictions are in perpetuity. The ones that are timed, which are projects approved, you know, in some cases decades ago, the town does have reserve the right to extend the deed restriction, you know, for a certain cost. And that hasn't happened in quite some time, but it does happen occasionally. But our, our purpose would be to have them deed restricted in perpetuity. What we don't want these units to become is, and you, you can't own a condo in Boston and then buy one of these non-market units. You can't own a place in New York and buy one of these units. You can't have bought a property in the last three years. I mean, you could have owned something in Boston years ago, sold it, you know, lived here for many years and you qualify based on your income to buy one of these units. And you're not allowed to short term rent the units. So it's really for people that live there and work here and year round.
I was just envisioning something where it wasn't selling for whatever reason, that it wasn't big enough. There wasn't interest in a, a unit or two. And I was trying to figure out, would the developer have the right to take that deed restriction back and be like, I'm going to rent these market or?
Yeah. So I mean.
To make the money. Because, you know.
They're doing it to make money.
Yeah. So, I mean, assuming that there's the development fee within the budget and we know it's a $21 million and we know the revenue source is unable to sell the units, I guess you have two options. You lower the cost of the unit, but there's a, there's a delta there.
Right.
But the, the question may come to the town, do we provide more than a $4 million subsidy? Or do we allow the developer to convert them, to convert a unit to rental? Or if they sell it for less, does it require a higher subsidy from the town?
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yeah.
I think you answered my question. You said the restrictions include short term rentals. You, you couldn't use this for a short term rental. All right. So as long as I'm standing here, some of the folks listening in were wondering if they can ask questions. Is that, is there a capability of, of asking questions on Zoom?
There's a Q and A that's open that people can type their questions into and I'll read them out loud.
Other than that, they can phone me, text me. If you don't have my phone number, you're out of luck, but you know, whatever.
Hey there. I just, I want to say thank you for doing the, the purchase option rather than rentals. I think that's a great move in town. I was in the lottery for the Meadows back when that was happening and that was pretty awesome. Like my friends who bought houses have had really vibrant lives here as a result. I do have a concern, which is that I went through and kind of added these up a while ago. And the Donahue Institute mentions this missing middle, but I don't see any numbers for how many people that is that we're trying to accommodate. Do you, and I don't know if you have that number for tonight, but maybe for Town Meeting? Because I want to know, are we talking about this solves for 30 people and that's it? Or are we talking about, we're trying to fit like 100 missing middle units in? Because I'm noticing that this works better for a developer. They're going to make more money off of this than they're going to make off of truly affordable housing. And, and I'm just curious, like, I know we have to fill the gap for, for lower income as well. And I'm just curious, like, if we have a number of units that we're actually trying to meet.
Yeah. So the needs assessment does get specific as numbers in different income ranges. And so even though the VFW property, for example, has 65 units, it'll house over 100 people based on number of bedrooms and, and things like that. Same thing here. It, it could be 40 people, it could be more than 40 people depending on the makeup of the, of the household. You'd be surprised because there are less subsidies or no subsidies for this type of housing. There's actually more developer risk for a project like this than there is for the affordable project at, at three Jerome Smith. Because you know, the funding sources, you get the loan compats credits from the state and the, and the federal government. You know, it's one of the reasons we, you know, we got four developers that put in proposals for three Jerome Smith and we only got one for 26 Shangpaner because it's, it's complicated. It's sort of unprecedented. It had actually originally been a proposed market rate rental project where rents were, you know, north of $3,000. And the needs assessment was clear that vast majority of people who need housing can't afford that kind of rent. And then we saw the demand for homeownership. I mean, you mentioned being in the lottery. When you have 27 distinct families that are actually tied to Provincetown, all qualifying for just one unit or a couple of units a year. It also just demonstrates the demand for that type of, of housing. So we can pull up some of the data from the needs assessment and go from there. You know, obviously Provincetown, you know, we can't build enough housing units for everybody that wants to live here from anywhere, right? But what we've really focused on, and we had 1,700 people fill out the housing needs assessment survey, which was, I mean, the UMass Donahue Institute said that's unprecedented in terms of the number of people who responded. And vast majority of employees here, former, former employees, former residents, current residents, the vast majority were people that lived here. And, you know, housing insecurity doesn't necessarily mean you're sleeping in your car. It means you may have housing just for the summer and live somewhere else in the winter and just want sort of the year round, a year round lease. The missing middle has also somewhat been addressed in the lease to locals program, where the town is providing direct subsidy to property owners who rent year round. And so that program will hit a year next month and we've housed 55, 55 people now have year round leases that didn't have a year round lease a year ago for just under a half a million dollars. Over 33 properties work at 45 different small businesses in town. And that's without even putting a single shovel in the ground. And that's just a good example of using town. And that's all coming from short term rental taxes and the housing fund as well, not coming from just general property tax dollars. So it's sort of, you know, one project doesn't solve for every challenge and every person in town, but investing in different income levels and different makeups of project, I think, you know, globally puts a dent in, in the needs assessment.
Hi. Is there any unused inventory in the lease to locals program currently?
No. So we, we, the select board and the housing boards, it did renew the program for a second year. And so we are, the first year exceeded our projections. So we had more participating properties than we expected. And we are projecting that we'd house another 40 people in year two with new properties. And so we do have some properties on the pipeline for approval. You know, we, we, we still do have more tenants that have applied and created profiles than we do units. And so we encourage people to make profiles. And if you know someone that's thinking about year round renting, we can answer the questions and, you know, make sure they know all about the program and, and things like that. So we've appreciated the people that have participated.
I do have one data point to share to Jamie's question of just people that filled out the survey as part of the housing needs assessment that said they were housing insecure between 80% AMI and 200% AMI. It was 235 people.
Just a rendering of the project on Shangpaner. Four story building that presents as a three and a half story building. Again, a limited, limited inventory of land, you know, density is important. We'll get into later the Shangpaner form based zoning code. But Town Meeting Body, I think in 2022 approved four story zoning in the Shangpaner corridor for inclusionary housing projects. And this would be the first of its kind on Shangpaner. All right. Similar but different than Article eight, the 26 Shangpaner is 207 Route Six, which is known as the Barracks Project. This project has been in the public ethos for about five years, if not, if not more. Local business owner, Patrick Patrick, it's an underdeveloped privately owned lot. The Barracks Project proposes the development of 13 year round rental units. That's the town's financial interest or, you know, housing interest in this is 1.3 million dollar subsidy for 13 year round deed restricted rental units. And then the major component of that project is 28 dormitory style rooms for seasonal workers. I think it would house up to 112 dorm beds seasonally. And so this would address the seasonal worker challenges that a lot of our, well, the town and a lot of our private businesses experience each summer. And I know the developer would be working directly with business owners who are looking to house their workers seasonally. And so again, in addition to the seasonal housing, the town's interest really is in 13 additional year round rental units that would be year round deed restricted. For, for this article, the Barracks, this, they also rely on private financing from the bank. The select board has made a soft commitment of 1.3 million. It does require authorization and an appropriation from Town Meeting. This would also be a borrowing article up to the 1.3. As Leslie said before, this would be last money in. And so again, it's not as if here's 1.3 and we hope you make the project happen. They have a private lender involved, mass development quasi-state municipal financing agency involved. And obviously we would work with them. And it's one thing to tell a lender that there's a soft commitment for 1.3 and it's another thing to actually have the appropriation. And then it's really up to the developer then to work with the private lender to get the funding together and put a shovel in the ground. And this would, this would be the last money in to mitigate risk from the town. And we're proposing that, again, this is not a debt exclusion impacting property taxes. This would also come from the rooms tax and the housing fund over the next five years. Go if you want to come to the mic.
How does a deed restriction work on rental property?
So it's a, it's a legal agreement. Essentially the way that the grant agreements are typically framed is the town is purchasing the deed restriction. And so in exchange for the 1.3 million dollars, the town is getting a deed restriction filed, registered on those 13 units. The town's housing office then does monitoring of those units on an annual basis. The town's housing office then does monitoring of those units, um, on an annual basis.
Monitoring, uh, I, how would the rent be determined after this first pass?
Oh, would the rent be determined? Uh, so the town is purchasing the deed restrictions that they're year on rentals. The town, they're not going to be town managed.
No.
Rental units. And so we're not going to, we're not sort of involved in setting the rent prices. I know it is something that the select board discussed with the developer is, you know, looking at some of the parking and some of the rents and, um, some of the concerns around what people can afford and what they can't, what they can't afford. Um, but the town's interest is increasing the inventory of of year on rentals for this project in particular.
Regardless of what the rent will end up being five years down the road?
Essentially for this project, yeah.
Okay. And is the deed restriction that the town has purchased ever, uh, possibly turned into condo sale for these apartments?
No, that's not, that's not legally allowed.
Great.
And there's no examples of that with monitored units that the housing office and the town have issued these restrictions on in the past.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, um, in the original iteration, I believe there was a three bedroom apartment for the, for the managing team, which I believe was the Patrick family. Is that still included in the, in the model?
Uh, so there, so the $1.3 million subsidy was, um, we got there because of the 13 year round units, the restrictions. So about $100,000 subsidy per unit to get the deed restricted units. There's still 16, there is a total of 16 rental units in the project, but only 13 of the 16 would be year round deed restriction. Hence why the town is only doing 1.3. The developer had requested 1.8 from the select board and the select board, based on the information about those three other units that they would be for the developer or, you know, friends, family. Mm hmm. There's other people visiting that the town didn't really have an interest in subsidizing units that weren't going to be year round occupied.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me. What is the median income of a seasonal worker?
Uh, I mean, I have, I, that's a hard question to answer and it really probably depends what job you're doing and where you work and how you're paid. And I imagine there's a huge range of what people make over the summer. I know there's bartenders that make more than most of us probably make. Um, and then there's, there's people that probably aren't making much. And so it really does depend.
And the, does the one 1900 to 2500, does that include rent for the dormitory rooms? Or are they cheaper?
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, Patrick's here. So the, the 1900 to 2500 are just the, um, those, those are what was proposed in any presentation to the select board for the year, for the year on rentals, not the, not the seasonal dormitory.
Do you happen to know how many, um, people?
Yeah.
I'm also wondering how many people are in a dormitory room. I'm trying to come to the 112.
So I think it's four per room, 28 rooms, but good.
Um, the, I am Patrick Patrick, the developer. And, um, the dorm rooms are four, four to a room. It's two sets of bunk beds, um, private bath. And then there's a, um, 1800 square foot, uh, lobby area where there's lounge, cooking and eating facilities, uh, as well as outdoor, uh, eating area, eating areas as well. And the, um, rent for a, for a person for the, uh, summer is, um, 4,500 to 6,000 if they're here for, like, for a long season. And there's additional, additional money paid on top of that.
Not per month, you mean?
By employers, it's fairly significant.
You're saying for the entire season, not just?
That's, that's correct, for one person for the entire season.
What's the season?
Um, it can be with, with a college student, it can be as short as three months. Um, with somebody who is here for a long season, like, uh, somebody who's got a H2B visa can be as much as 10 months. It's usually not. Um, so the average on the American or H2, or H2B, um, employee who's here is probably in the six to seven months, whereas the college students will be three to four. And they pay, they pay a little bit towards the lower end of the scale on the seasonal per person rent for a dormitory space.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, is there, uh, when it's, you say six year round rentals? Um, is there any restriction on whether those people live in town or they rented as a second home? Or, uh, uh, because years ago, there was a development behind, right up in the back of the parking lot up there. And one person was eligible and they got it at an affordable rate and put in affordable stainless steel kitchen and granite countertops. And, uh, so is there any kind of way to figure out who's getting those year round rentals? So they do what there's, what we want them to do?
So it's not a traditional affordable project where the town manages the lottery whereby on the 26 Shang Painter, the town sets the eligibility, manages the lottery and can pretty much establish the confines of those 30 units. This is, this, these units would not be based on lottery. They would be year on deed restricted. So the town wouldn't necessarily be able to require that they're occupied by someone that has already lived here, but they would have to live here year round and wouldn't be allowed to be short term rented. Um, and with the deed restriction, there would be annual monitoring. But I don't know, Patrick, if you want to add anything to that. But because the town isn't managing a lottery or a purchase, we're just managing and monitoring the deed restriction.
I can add a little bit to that. Um, every unit in the building, whether seasonal or year round, is getting a, um, additional, uh, subsidy from an employer or nonprofit. So, um, which, so for a local nonprofit or employer to be essentially sponsoring a resident, that pretty much guarantees that every resident is working in Province Town.
That's.
That, that's for the entire building.
Uh, sorry, Patrick, just while I have you at the mic, there was a question online. Uh, so are 112 people sharing the 1800 square foot room lounge slash kitchen?
Um, yes, it's also open as co-living space, uh, for apartment residents. If they want to have a gathering of more people than they can fit in their unit. Each, um, dormitory room will have a kitchenette in it. Um, so they won't have a stove, but they would have a little counter, full size refrigerator, uh, microwave, coffee maker. Um, and I'm pretty sure I already mentioned private bath. So it is, it is, um, the lobby cooking area would only be if they wanted a full service cooktop and oven. Other than that, they have their own facility with, also with a little dining table for four in their, in their room. So it, they're like efficiency units in a hotel with two sets of bunk beds.
Thank you.
Patrick may have to come back to the microphone here. Um, the educational, um, off season activity. Does the town have any input as to what happens there? Who sponsors it? Maybe it's four Cs or other institutions in town? I'm just wondering about that.
Yeah, I mean, the town doesn't do programming for private, private buildings, so.
Um, the town's not involved in that piece. Um, but I can tell you that, uh, tentatively, the three organizations that would be utilizing the dormitory space in the off season to house students for new programs in town, um, would be the Cape School of Art, um, Center for Coastal Studies and Outer Cape Health.
Patrick. Right, and I just want to remind folks over the next several days, we'll, we'll be putting more information out on social media and multiple means of communication. So if folks want to do further research in any of the articles, don't be shy to, to reach out. And we try to make the information as accessible as possible as you go into town meeting. Uh, Article 10, recurring article, a transfer from free cash to the general stabilization fund. Article 11, um, it's a standalone article. It would have been included in the CIP, uh, but because it's for a playground and we're applying for a state park grant, uh, we need to adopt particular language. Uh, this would transfer $200,000 from free cash to, uh, the resurfacing for Chelsea Ernest, uh, playground, which is at one Bradford Street, uh, removal of the sand surface at the playground, installation of rubber pore. Um, we did an ADA assessment, accessible, um, Americans Disability Act assessment to make it more accessible to community members. Um, and I think, uh, refresh of the park was recommended by the recommission. Rachel?
This is just a technical question because I didn't do my homework. I see down on the bottom, you're talking about something used rubber pore in place. Well, for those who didn't know, that was my bailiwick for many years, the playgrounds. And I was the supervisor to plan programs there. So we always, we always chose the sand because it was safer. It also got dirty quicker and it costs more to keep replacing it. I'm not familiar with this substance because it sounds like it could be bouncy. You know, my interpretation because of the rubber pore. What is that? I mean, they can get big boo boos on that, but, but is, I'm sure you're not going to put anything. It's not going to be as safe as it can be for kids.
Yeah.
I'm just not familiar with this substance. So is, what has the problem, has there been any other problems with it before this?
Uh, don't think so. I mean, we have other parks with the rubber pore playgrounds.
I'm sure they call rescue if they needed to do that, but, but I'm sure it's harder.
Yeah.
It's harder substance. Well, I mean, you've done your homework. I hope I didn't, but I will go down and see.
Homework on rubber pore.
I'm sorry.
At a town meeting because.
Address the audience. I've been around longer than Jerusalem's goat. So, so I've probably been around longer than some of you have been on earth. But anyway, I'm Rachel White, so I'm just here grandstanding. Bye for now.
Thanks, Rachel. A couple of articles on the Community Preservation Act. Uh, this is CPA. We have a Community Preservation Committee. We get a lot of applicants each year. Uh, this CPA article is not the funding article. This actually, um, approves an amendment to our current CPA grant program. Uh, in FY22, town meeting voters approved the homeowner assistance program with the goal of closing a gap in affordable homeownership repair resources to include both home, affordable homeowners and, um, affordable, uh, people in affordable housing that own condos as well. So we have an emergency repair program that's been funded by CPA funds by town meeting in the past. And given the language of the program, it's very specific about emergency repairs. And so we've actually not drawn down any of the money because technically with the language, it's hard for affordable homeowners to qualify for the funding. And so this expands the program from emergency repairs, uh, expands eligibility to a wider range of, uh, costs. Um, so one of those costs, for example, could be increased condo fees for people in affordable housing. So somebody buys an affordable home within the lottery, uh, for an affordable price. Their mortgage is set, they have financing and they're paying the same condo fee that, uh, people in the development that own market units are paying. And condo fees go up in some of these private units and their income isn't keeping up with the condo fees. And so this fund can potentially help, um, those homeowners that apply for assistance and also would go towards other home improvement projects, uh, that become, you know, health and safety hazards in some of these, um, homes as well. Uh, and so this just adds language to it, doesn't actually expend any funds. And then Article 13 is the actual, it's a recurring article. Every year we, um, have an article about the community preservation budget for the next fiscal year. Uh, so we set aside funds. Were required by the state when you have CPA that funds go into different categories from open space, historic resources and community, community housing. And so this is all broken down in the warrant and in the booklet, sort of where the CPA expenses and the budget support. You'll see here under community housing, uh, the community housing council has requested 500,000, 75,000 for housing authority property at 33 Court Street. Uh, community housing, a $13,000 expenditure. Historical preservation, a $15,000 grant for artist housing preservation on Pearl Street in partnership with the Fine Arts Work Center. Historic preservation, 35,000. Continues to go through under open space, $95,000 for the purchase of the property at 43 Atkins Mayo Road as conservation land, open space, recreation. And so a number of, of projects and, and obviously voters are able to ask specific questions on projects. And, um, this has gone through a pretty extensive community process with the CPC and public hearings. And they put a lot of thought into, um, those recommendations. Article 14 and 15 is rescinding prior capital improvement article authorizations. And so, um, similar to the borrowing authorization, uh, recensions we did earlier. Um, on the warrant, this would, voters in the past have approved funding for these projects through the capital improvement plan. And this money was unspent, offset by grants, projects came in on our budget. And this puts $176,000 back into the capital stabilization fund, which then we use as a funding source for the CIP and future articles. And Article 16 is the capital improvement, uh, program. And so every year, different departments, we work with the select board and finance committee, finance committee to put together a five year capital plan. Uh, so this year was FY26 through FY30, um, everything from, uh, fleet and the police and fire department, uh, coastal resilience, um, building maintenance, um, things like that. Over the last several years, we have typically had what's called a debt exclusion override as part of the capital plan. This year, no project within the CIP is a debt exclusion. So last year, Mata Field was a $12 million debt exclusion within the CIP. A few years before that was the police station, uh, CIP debt exclusion. Uh, we had the Canary Wharf debt exclusion. So the CIP for FY26 as proposed and presented doesn't include any debt exclusion. It's fully funded by either free cash or the capital stabilization fund. And a breakdown and description of every component of the CIP is included in the warrant and, um, will be included in the town meeting booklet. And at town meeting, we separate it by funding source. So depending on the project, it's either being funded by free cash, the capital stabilization fund. And then we have, uh, an article specific to the fire department, which we're going to fund partly through the ambulance fund. Streets and sidewalks, uh, new HVAC system at the library that's needed. Obviously, if there's questions, feel free to interrupt. Good.
Just a question on 16 dash two, the Historic District Commission. There's $50,000 to be expended at the direction of the town manager.
Yep.
Will the Historic District Commission in their revision of their guidelines be required to have public meetings as part of their revision?
Yes, um, there'll be multiple opportunities. And so this money would bring on a consultant to work with the Historic District Commission to look at, um, updating any potential regulations, um, having sort of consistent, uh, framework and decision-making rationale for design standards. Obviously, you know, people have had interactions with the HTC and projects and it's a really important board and a lot of dedicated volunteers on that board. And I think staff want to, it's been a while since they've taken a look at some of the design standards to apply consistency, um, across different applicants and different projects. And so this would help them implement that. The HTC would have to vote to adopt or implement any regulation changes, um, which would require ample notice and public agendas and hearings and, and whatnot. So if the, if the article is passed. Rachel? Yeah, yeah, what was it?
Moving on, this has to do with Fisherman's Memorial.
Yep.
Which was my baby back in 1977. And the selectmen wanted it, but there was no funding source. We were almost in receivership.
Yep.
So it's been a project and ongoing for a very long time.
Yeah.
I have just tons of information on it, which goes nowhere every time. But in the meantime, we had gotten involved. But in the meantime, we had gotten involved with state numbers and, and lawyers and things. And I don't know if you can just throw this out and start over new. That was a concern of mine that I was going to address when the, when the, the fire station business came up and I sat down. But anyway, I'm glad to see that there's a funding source. What we had in the beginning, though, the amount of money that was wanted was much more than this. So I suspect that they've probably modified the project because the one that was going to a foundry was somewhere around $100,000.
Yep.
So if they've modified, I'll just be grateful to see anything that goes there before I cash out. So I'm glad that somebody's working on it. If they need any information from me at all, I've got tons of it.
Yep.
Thank you for listening to me and backing up.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Rachel. This is just going to be one funding source towards the project, so it's not going to 100% fund the memorial. So I think it's less that they modified it and more that they, they applied for limited CPA money and the committee recommended the amount that's in the warrant. And we can work with them on, you know, future funding if it requires a future CIP. I know they're doing some private fundraising, but happy to connect you with them. And they've been working with Dan and others on moving that forward. Article 17, transitioning into different set of articles away from CPA and financial articles, seasonal community designation. Last year, Governor Healey signed the Affordable Homes Act. It creates seasonal communities. It's a number of communities on Cape Cod and in the Berkshires, any community where 30% of your housing stock is second homeowners or seasonal, you're automatically in the category of eligibility to be a seasonal community. Specific in the statute is language that any qualifying seasonal community needs to officially accept the designation. And so Town Meeting needs to officially accept the designation of being a seasonal community. And it opens the door to dedicated state resources, eligibility for grants, and seasonal communities have a different set of housing challenges than other communities in Provincetown. Would also say that a lot of Provincetowns pioneering work in housing sort of sets a stage for a lot of components in the Affordable Homes Act and seasonal communities. For example, it allows communities now to create year-round housing trusts, something Provincetown has had, both the Affordable Housing Trust and the Year-Round Market Rental Housing Trust. The overall act required communities to allow ADUs. Provincetown's been doing that for a very long time. And so from the town's perspective, this is really a positive thing. It would only open up opportunities for funding and specific policies geared towards challenges specific to seasonal communities in the future. I know there's been some questions about, you know, will this force Provincetown to adopt certain zoning? Any zone change requires two-thirds majority of Town Meeting body. And so by accepting seasonal community designation, doesn't mean we're automatically accepting, you know, tiny home zoning in every single lot in Provincetown. So I just want to be clear what this does and what it doesn't do. And if there's a fear about accepting the unknown, any zone change would have to come back before Town Meeting body and be approved by a two-thirds majority. But the, just want to provide a few examples of what the designation does, allows us to acquire year-round housing occupancy restrictions. Town Meeting passed that home rule petition, sent it to the state in response to Provincetown and Nantucket included that in the designation. It allows communities like Provincetown to use municipal funds towards municipal housing and also provide priority to municipality employees. And so both Provincetown, but Nantucket in particular, they were having a really hard time getting workers for their water treatment plant. They wanted to use public funds to build housing specifically for DPW employees and they legally weren't allowed to. And so the seasonal communities designation also allows communities to invest resources pending appropriation by the appropriating body to build housing specific to, or prioritize for municipal employees. Doesn't require you to, but it allows you to have more tools at your disposal, allows local boards to expand their residential tax exemption specifically in seasonal communities, preserve year-round affordable and attainable housing. Still a little bit more on the, on the benefits. Again, 17 is just accepting that designation. There is an article later under zoning to modify our accessory dwelling unit bylaw to conform with the new Affordable Homes Act, essentially going from 600 square feet to up to 900 square feet, which is required by the new state, state law.
Alex, there is a question online about this. Some regulations governing this are not written yet. They won't be available until the fall. Why are we being asked to vote on something when all the facts are not available? Shouldn't we wait for the summer to learn more?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. And I think one of the reasons I alluded to a couple of questions I've seen publicly around, I think trying to, it's still a little bit of fear about, oh, accepting this designation now, they're going to put out regulations in the future that, you know, mention these kind of zoning. Any of those zoning bylaws would have to come back before Town Meeting. Would also prevent us from having to call a special Town Meeting just to accept the designation of being a seasonal community in the situation where grant money becomes available in June or July that only seasonal communities are eligible for. We wouldn't be able to apply that because we haven't accepted this designation. The point of the legislation is to be additive and beneficial to seasonal communities, not, not the opposite. And so I know from the town's perspective, we're not really, we don't really have a fear of the unknown in terms of regulations. And towns have a seat at the table in terms of some of those regulations, providing feedback. There's a seasonal communities advisory council that's advising the administration. So just wanted to make a couple of those things clear.
I have a, it's a pretty short article in the warrant, but unfortunately, a lot of people had questions and I think I drew the short straw, so I'm supposed to pose all these questions right now. So maybe you want to talk first because it might clear up some of these questions.
If I can, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, go for it. And I'll say this, the thrust of it has to do with, so as you guys probably.
Talking on the mic?
Sorry. As you probably know, the, the state passed this piece of legislation and it, it designated, as, as Alex just said, the, a number of towns in both Cape Cod and in the Berkshires as seasonal. But then it further required pursuant to, I think, on advice of council to, to have the towns actually vote for the designation. Somewhere along the line, an advisory council was formed by the state that's supposed to promulgate regulations. Unfortunately, a number of towns are going to be voting before the regulations are in place. And I, I know you mentioned that, that stirred some fear. I believe last night, and I could be wrong about this, Truro actually decided not to vote on this because their vote, their Town Meeting would have happened before the rules were promulgated. That is to say, the, the state is projecting now that they will promulgate regulations sometime in the fall. Obviously, we're going to vote before the fall. And so I think it's, it's not so much people are against any of this necessarily, but I think people feel like it's signing a contract before you have all the terms in place. And that was, that's the thrust of many of these questions. I have some others, though. But if you want to address, address that. But Truro did decide not to do this, so.
Well, I'll make sure to call my friends in Truro and find out because there seems to be a question of that, and they might have. I'm going to turn.
Yeah.
See, this is all, I was with Julian Seer, who is the author of this seasonal communities designation, this past Friday. He said that this part of the Affordable Homes Act came from home rule petitions from all of us across the Cape and the islands, all the towns across the Cape and the islands. Now, what I want to show you is that, yes, there's some regulations that haven't been put together, but this is a framework. If you look at that, all of them say allow, 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 allow. And it's for housing for artists and people who support artists and literary professions. It's for teachers. It's for first responders, firefighters. It's for, we're going to also try to get it for healthcare workers. I'm talking to Julian about expanding that group there. This is going to be a fluid type of designation because as problems come up, you're going to have to create more tools for it. There are two provisions in there that are requirement. One is that you, a town has to create a tiny home zoning. Any kind of tiny home zoning that they do will have to be, go through all the town committees and it'll come back here for you all to decide whether you want, like, what's been done or not. Everything else is an option. So the reason why we think it's time is that we kind of want to move on some of these options. We don't have to worry about the, the bylaws and the regulations, excuse me, not the bylaws, but the regulations they're going to do for year-round market rate trusts because we have one. We actually got it done in statutes. We're not really worried about what they're going to say about what kind of, you know, what, what boxes they're going to put around building housing because we have a seat at the table. Julian's on the advisory council. Addie Ludley is on the advisory council. They're both representatives. And a lot of these regulations, I just went through the ADU bylaw regulations and the, it was part of the Affordable Homes Act, the ADUs by rights. I looked at the regulation and basically they allow municipalities certain things and not, and then they say, you got, you can't be excessive. Lot of these regulations are very vague. So my point to you is, is that we're not going to lose by saying, yes, we want to do this now. And if we find that we don't like something, we can rescind it. We're not locked into anything. I also heard on social media that somehow the state's going to mandate and we're going to be taking away some of our rights. It's not going to happen because we're going to create the bylaw for tiny, tiny homes that works for Provincetown. We're going to make sure that underutilized lots, that they're the other requirement that we have to have zoning that you can build on that, what works for Provincetown. So I just, I think there's been some fear on that and, you know, we can wait. But I think that I've really read this a lot and I don't have that fear. So I hope that helps with this. It's actually 900 square feet by right or 50% of the gross, the 50% of the gross floor You're not, all those, your unit is grandfathered in. That's what the regulation says.
It's up to 900, so 900's the, so we, our current zoning bylaw around ADUs caps it at 600 square feet. Does it bring it up to a cap of 900 square feet?
But if you have some.
You're fine. It doesn't, yeah.
You're fine.
You can't have more, it's not a floor, it's a ceiling.
Yeah. And if you had more than 900 square feet, the legislation says that you can't go after anything that's pre-existing non-conforming.
It's the highest point, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's supposed to expand the number of ADUs, not reduce. So it's, it, it allows ADUs to be up to 900 square feet rather than our current bylaw that caps it at 600 square feet.
And I don't know that I answered your questions, Pat, but that's kind of the philosophy that the slug board had with it and why we're doing it. It's, there's very little here to loss. By the way, there's also something on social media that said, we have to do this to get money from the state. There is no money tied to this. They tried to pass a transfer tax last year and that died. There's absolutely no money. So at this point in time, any money that we would be use would be town money. So wanted to let you know that, too.
So thank you very much for, for that information. It was raised at Truro yesterday that by waiting somehow or another, you might jeopardize getting money. And I'm glad you clarified that there's no money tied to this, that, that, yeah, so that. No, but the, let me rephrase this. Truro was contemplating and eventually, I believe, decided to hold off on this until they see the regulations. One thing that was mentioned by an elected official was if you wait, you might jeopardize money. And indeed, that is not the case. You're not going to jeopardize money by waiting. So I think Truro ultimately decided, why, why would we vote right now until we see the regulations? And, and again, the regulations are to be promulgated by the fall according to the state. Personally, I, I worked for a municipality for about 30 years and I can assure you that when the state says they're going to do something in X time, it's usually a little bit longer than that. So if we wait for our next town meeting, or even if we're on a special town meeting, we're not going to run any risks. We're not losing anything. With respect to police officers and some sort of preference with municipal, with municipal workers, as a municipal worker for many years who represented police officers, defending police officers, I'm all over that. I'm all over that and I agree with that. But I would never advise a police officer to sign a contract if we didn't know all the terms, particularly in this situation. Section 32, right, which is the section that controls this, says that you can't get out of it. So for example, if we vote Town Meeting.
That's not true.
Hang on one second, hang on one second.
That's just not true.
Hey, hang on one second. Let me finish my thought. If you, if you vote at Town Meeting to declare this seasonal, and then for some reason you see the, the regulations there, there, sometime thereafter, and you're not happy, you have to ask and get permission from the state to get out of it, right? Get out of the designation.
No, we have.
Where it says something different.
Statute does not prohibit a town from opting out of the seasonal communities designation in the future should the town determine it is in the best interest of the town.
And it says, I don't know where you got that.
Yeah, and I, and I would, I would just say if the part-time.
Fiction.
Hold on, Pat. I mean, if the Part-Time Resident Taxpayers Association has a list of questions, you can send them to me and I'm happy to, you can email them out to your group, all of the answers.
Clear.
I also just want to say that we don't take shots from other communities, right? Like Provincetown is Provincetown and we've been a leader in housing because we haven't waited to build affordable housing or activate properties. We're leading the region in terms of housing development. And so the seasonal communities designation, honestly, is just, it's a positive designation. EOHLC has asked us to accept it. And so I'm just, I'm just curious, like, what the specific concern is.
Yeah.
When you go through the bullets of what it includes, like, is it the expansion of the residential tax exemption?
No.
As in seasonal.
No, actually, it's not that, although I do have a question on that, but that, it's not that at all. It actually is, I just want to point something out. These questions that I have come from people that are voters, come from people that take advantage of the residential tax exemption. It's, so it's not just part-timers, you know, whatever. I just happen to be the person speaking at the moment.
Yep.
But I looked at this statute probably as much as you did. That may speak to a boring life I have, I don't know. But, and yours too, yeah. So we should lament together. But I, I do not read it as any particular section in here that says, as it stands now, that you can just petition to get out of this. You actually have to get permission from the Secretary of Housing, or I think it says the words you use are executive officer. I believe perhaps there might be clarification on that if we see what the regulations are. And again, it's not that anybody is for or against any of this. The, the problem is it's not clear at the moment because the regulations haven't been written. And since we're so close to it, that is the state saying that, you know, the regulations are going to be written in the fall. And I think the questions being generated are, why don't we just wait and see where the dust lands before we commit to this? Again, more questions, but.
I think, Pat, I think your questions are good ones and I think that they're very fair. What I will say in, in comparing us to Truro, I don't know the context of the conversation, but if they're looking to get a year-round market rate housing trust, I would wait, but we have it. So I think, you know, that you made a really good point, but it depends on the context. What I will also let you all know that this actually, you know, I'd like us to do it, but also there, there is legislation that has been proposed by the towns, well, by Kip Diggs, who is part of the, who represents towns that aren't part of the seasonal communities. And it's going to go through the legislature and they're going to ask that all towns automatically become seasonal communities. So we can, you know, the thing is, but, that may not pass because it's a proposal. So we have an opportunity to do it here. I, I think that, I understand where you're coming from. I don't share that concern and I've been involved with the process of it, but I think these are fair questions. You know, and, no, but Jonathan, you're right. This is, this is the deal about the money. Yes, it's grants, but people on Facebook were talking about it's that there's money tied to this. There is no money that was tied to this. People said that you had to get this to get money from the state. There are grants that if you're a seasonal community and you say you are, you're first in line. You do it first. You know, so that, it would put us first in line for a lot of things. So that's my point. Yeah.
So it's like. It's like an odd debate situation when I thought it was just a question and answer. That issue was actually raised yesterday with Truro. And, you know, again, I think part of it is if you read the act, which is not attached to the warrant, there's no talk of that, the grant business, except that perhaps in the act itself, right? So the, so let me back it up. The act itself is very long. There's one section, section 32, that deals with seasonal communities. The larger statute though, deals with the grants. It has nothing to do with seasonal. You can just apply for the grant if you want. You don't have to be a seasonal community to apply for a grant. And I think that was the thinking in other towns. So you're not going to lose out on anything. Yeah.
If you have a ton of questions, I mean, it's already past seven and we need to get through the warrant. And so again, if, if members have questions or if you have questions, we can get through it. But I think your point has been made. You support postponing the article and.
So I'm sorry, but one other, one other little point though. If you, if, this is a question that was raised. If we vote now, do we lose leverage in having any say in informing the regulations? Yeah.
Yeah.
The same situation.
Yeah, you also, you also have real estate agents and developers. You also, you also have folks that are from, 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 from the Berkshires that have very different interests from us.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, I think the point has been made and, you know, questions have been asked and I think, yeah, I think your opinion's clear. So the whole point of seasonal communities is designed by input from seasonal communities. And so, you know, there would be some irony and hey, you're designated a seasonal community, but communities aren't actually accepting it. So legislation we design. So we're going to move on to Article 18 and, you know, town meeting voters can decide to accept the designation and whether it passes or not, we move on to Article 18. Which is not nearly as exciting. Waste water treatment plant, or our system, our design, build, operate contract. We typically have a long-term contract with the operator of our wastewater treatment plant. We had to go back out to bid. And so the town meeting body does need to vote to approve and authorize the town manager and the SLUG board to enter into the contract with the design, build, operator. And this is funded out of the water, the wastewater enterprise fund. And so this is outside the general fund budget and funded by the enterprise fund. It's a legal agreement with the, with the vendor. Home rule petition charter amendment. This is actually sponsored this year by the Board of Fire Engineers. This would retain the Board of Fire Engineers as an advisory board, but add the position of fire chief to the list of town staff hired by the town manager and confirmed by the SLUG board and would establish, given that we have many more staff in the fire department, full-time staff over 20 now compared to where we were just a couple of years ago. This would have a similar, similar structure to the police department with the fire chief and the police chief as managers of those public safety departments. I know this was on the warrant last year. It got indefinitely postponed. As I said before, unlike last year, the Board of Fire Engineers is recommending this article and sponsoring it. As I mentioned in the budget article, we're still retaining a call for us to back up the full-time career personnel. And we expect the Board of Fire Engineers to continue to exist and be advisory. Right now, under the current charter, the fire chief must come from one of the members of the Board of Fire Engineers, which also limits eligibility for the next fire chief. Our current fire chief is required by law to retire in about a year, I think spring of 2026. And essentially the chief would need to come from the Board of Fire Engineers, which is a very small group of people. And I think they also, in sponsoring this article, agree with the transition to the fire chief being appointed by the town manager. Again, there's still the charter requirement that the fire chief live in Province Town. If the charter change that we approved is implemented, it would extend that to Wellfleet. All right, we do have a couple of citizen petition articles. I'm going to, just given time, I'm going to go through the articles after the citizen petitions, answer some questions, and then we'll hand it over to the citizen petitioners to go through their articles, if that's okay, for folks. Yeah. Yeah, we're going to get to the zoning articles. And then we'll get to the citizen petitions. I know we have Article 20 presenters and I think we have Article, what is it, 23? Okay. Okay, great. Uh, let's see here. Yeah, so Jonathan's going to come up and give a quick presentation on the article, the petitioner. The petitioners will be up in a bit, but I want to get through some of the. Are you sneaking out and then coming back?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, it sounds good. Thank you. Article 24 is a home rule petition charter amendment. This would allow alternates, all town boards to have five regular members and two alternate members. This is recommended by a number of town boards in town and town staff that work directly with the town boards, specifically the Conservation Commission. Allows alternate members to vote in the absence of a regular member. Right now, we have inconsistent language around different town boards. Article 25, sponsored by the Animal Welfare Committee, would, would ban the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, which are commonly used to kill rats and rodents. There's going to be a bunch, there's a bunch of information in the booklet and more information in the warrant. And this would ban this in Province Town, given the impact on other animals in town. Article 26 is open space conservation, would establish 61 rear Howland Street as park passive recreation land. This is brought by the Open Space Committee. They recommend this article, not a funding article. Article 27 is in response to a citizen petition article, a non-binding article a year ago at annual town meeting. It asked Province Town voters if they agreed with limiting the number of lodging licenses that one company could have to three. Voters overwhelmingly said yes. So this year, the town and the SLUG board are introducing an article to follow up on that bylaw. Yeah. I think just one. Five or six. Article 28, so anyway, Article 27 is codifying in an actual bylaw. It is a binding bylaw agreement, would have to be approved by the Attorney General, but it is a general bylaw sponsored by the town. Article 28, administration of fines. This is the town adopting Chapter 40U. It's a local option statute that allows the towns to place liens on property when they don't comply with local Board of Health orders, building orders. And so if the properties end non-compliance and are not paying the fines, the town can then impose a lien on the property. And the town has right of first refusal, is the first payee when there is a real estate transfer. So there's been a couple of properties in particular in town that you may have read about that have had health and building violations and backed up balance of unpaid citations. If we had 40U in effect, we could have placed liens on the property and then the town would recoup that money when the property was sold. So other cities and towns, many have adopted Chapter 40U. This is the town opting in, which give us more authority to enforce our local Board of Health and building ordinances. Article 29 is a general bylaw in regards to alarm systems. Given the increased development in town over the years, we've had a significant number of false fire alarms triggered by alarm systems over the years. And they strain our emergency services in particular. So this amendment is a proactive measure aimed at enhancing public safety by requiring that all new construction of three or more units must have a fire alarm system installed and a secure key box installed in a location accessible to the fire department.
Is this just for new construction? Because I have an existing alarm system that cost me $9,000 and they don't make it anymore. So this, and I'm not opposed to the idea that the alarm horn should go off, but they might tell me, we can't do that with your system. You have to reinstall a whole new system. I'm just curious as to.
The key about this is it's for new construction of three or more units, whatever the building code allows for other instances I can't speak to, but you wouldn't have to make any changes right now.
All right, so there's a few zoning articles and then we'll get to the citizen petitions. I know zoning articles can be tricky. There's a lot of information in the packet and the warrant. And I'll go through these, obviously if there's questions, please interrupt and we can elaborate. And we're happy to stay after. I know we have our Community Development Director and Town Planner here. For folks tuning in, we are recording this and we will rebroadcast it as well. Article 30 is amending the inclusionary zoning bylaw. This would trigger the inclusionary bylaw and the requirement to pay into the in-luthy for any current property owner of a two-family or more that's adding one additional unit. It's a loophole in the inclusionary zoning bylaw that we're seeking to close. So if you have a two-family or more and you're adding one unit, you currently don't have to pay into the Affordable Housing Trust. This would require that you do that or create an affordable unit. Article 31 is an amendment to growth management that allows the SLUG board more flexibility to allocate gallons to category one and two, which are a community and affordable housing and inclusionary projects in category two. Article 32 is rezoning in regards to the East End in particular. So this will rezone 53 parcels of land on Commercial Street within the East End between Dyer Street and Cook Street that are currently zoned as Residential 3, Reg 3, to TCC, the Town Center Commercial District. There are several restaurants and retail establishments within this portion of town already. And Reg 3 zoning does not currently allow these types of uses, which makes the existing restaurants and retail stores pre-existing non-conforming uses within the Reg 3 district. The portion of Commercial Street is cohesive, it's adjacent to the TCC. So it brings the current uses more into conformity with other zoning. It does not affect the broader use table of the Reg 3 zoning district. It will provide greater flexibility for businesses, entrepreneurship, seeking spaces in this portion of the East End. So again, this would rezone 53 parcels between Cook Street and Dyer Street. Article 33, this would allow the zoning board of appeals to issue a special permit for the creation of a tourist house, guest house, or bed and breakfast. Back in 2016, town meeting body adopted a zoning amendment that allowed for hotels, motels, and inns in Res 1. There was an oversight at the time where it didn't include guest houses, bed and breakfast, or tourist houses in Res 1. And so this cleans up that inconsistency and allows for current bed and breakfasts, inns and guest houses in Res 1 to be a permitted principal use in that, in that zoning table. And this is based on some feedback of guest houses and B&amp;Bs in Res 1. Article 34 is, is being indefinitely postponed by the planning board. And Article 35 is mixed-use overlay district. This is presented by the planning board and this is designed to maintain the active street and commercial activity on Commercial Street and its unique sense of place. And so this is to promote a greater variety of housing choice, create a diversity of housing opportunities on upper stories, but also regulates the amount of commercial space that is required on the ground floor and street front along Commercial Street. We've seen some conversions of commercial spaces on Commercial Street go from restaurants or other uses to condos and/or single-family homes. This explicitly prohibits conversion into single-family homes in this district. And it also requires that a minimum area of 1,500 square feet is maintained as a commercial space on the first floor. If you're already under 1,500 square feet and there's a property change, you have to maintain it at existing number of, of square feet. Yeah. I think it could be converted. Yeah, and this, this isn't triggered if you're doing upgrades, renovations, or necessarily building, pulling a building permit. It's a change, when you're doing a change of use for the property, it triggers the, it would trigger the zoning bylaw. Article 36 is related to Article 32. So if Article 32 passes, Article 36 would be withdrawn. And then Article 37, as I alluded to before, is in regards to accessory dwelling units. Province Town was ahead of the state in allowing it by right. This just brings us up to compliance with the new state law, up to the 900 square feet limit rather than the 600 square feet limit that we have today. And then one of the biggest projects that the planning board and our working group has been working on, we've had a ton of people engage with this over the last 18 months, is Shankpainer Form-Based Zoning Code. So this would replace the general commercial zoning district that we have now on Shankpainer and establish the Shankpainer Form-Based Code. It's essentially a new zoning framework that focuses on shaping the physical character of buildings and streets rather than just regulating land use, encourages mixed-use development with businesses on the ground floor and residential units above. So when you saw the rendering of the Shankpainer project, one of the things a Form-Based Code encourages is street front development, ground, retail, commercial spaces with residential upstairs, parking lots in the rear rather than on the Shankpainer corridor. And so rather than it being perspect, perspect, excuse me, very specific in terms of you can do this on this type of zone, it's more of a, sort of a basis in terms of what, what type of buildings and designs and structures we want to see along that, along that corridor. There's going to be a QR code in the booklet. There's a ton of information online, so we encourage folks to, it's probably the longest article we have in the warrant and I can't do it justice tonight, but we're happy to make ourselves available to talk more about it. And there's a ton of information online about the Form-Based Code, how we got there, dozens of people, community input, community meetings, residents, business owners, and other stakeholders. And so I know Community Development of the town is really proud of this article and looking forward to presenting it at town meeting.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Ryan Brunson. My question about 38 is that a lot of the codes look good. But with that said, for the, I guess, the existing business property owners, will there be a grandfather clause or will they need to adhere to this code as well?
So every existing property would then become pre-existing non-conforming and essentially be grandfathered into the zoning that it's, it's under now. And so this is really about, I think, new construction, change of uses along Shank, along the Shankpainer corridor.
Okay, so as far as like if there's parking that's in the front, that would stay or that would have to?
That would stay.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be a huge undertaking if, if, I mean, this town is full of pre-existing non-conforming structures and businesses and lots and. So in, in, in a different context, in different zones, we have, it's very common to have pre-existing non-conforming uses and it's, it's for future development for how we want to see Shankpainer in the future.
Okay. I just think the goal should be to make it, you know, as beautiful as it should be. So, thank you.
Yep.
Is the planning board withdrawing Article 34?
Well, the planning board will make the motion and explain it. I think one of the things that they focused on was that the lodging license article that limited to three addressed a lot of their concerns and that was the impetus for the amendments to the Formula Business bylaw in the first place. And then I think there was feedback from town council at the most recent planning board meeting that suggested that expanding it to every business, not just a specific type of business, could lead to the Attorney General striking down the entire bylaw, as it has in some other communities.
I have to hear about those six hotels a lot. And the fact that it was going to block Margaritaville is in fact kind of a. And the fact that it was going to block Margaritaville is in fact kind of a plus, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, the planning board had multiple public meetings and public hearings on the warrant, and there'll be opportunities to express your opinions elsewhere, so defer to the chair of the planning board. All right, I'm going to pass it over to Jamie. All right, let me get out of your way. Just press this arrow here.
Hello, everybody. My name's Michelle Axelson. I've lived in Provincetown for 15 years. I'm a small business owner and a local activist. But before I moved here, I'm also a social worker and I was part of one of Massachusetts' longest-term transgender healthcare teams. Article 20 states, oh, I can see it here, to see if town hall, if town will vote to direct the select board to act expeditiously to convert all publicly accessible municipal restroom facilities in Provincetown to meet fully gender-inclusive standards in accordance with CMR 780, 10th Edition Mass State Building Code. And this is my partner, Jamie.
Hey there. I guess we lost half the audience. So this is a little, we're doing a project that is kind of twofold. One is bringing it to the warrant, and the other is working with the select board and the assistant town manager to bring this project into fruition. So tonight is a little bit about just educating about what we're doing. And we're going to talk you through some of that, but there are some other things happening in the background as well. So my name is Jamie Grasso. I'm a trans person. I live in Provincetown. I moved here in 2000. And I use he/him pronouns or he/they pronouns. You'll see up here, we've got a project going. There's a website for it, and there's an email if anyone wants to get involved. The scan code isn't going anywhere. It goes to a dead website right now. But we're starting to put things together so that people can kind of pay attention to this project. I recently graduated from UMass in architecture. And so I now have a master's in architecture, which is really exciting for me. So I want to talk to you about how architectural moments can be used to create, to reinforce civil rights. And we do that, for example, when we build ADA-accessible playgrounds. So ADA is the law. The physical structure of it is the architecture, basically. In this case, we want to talk about the physical structure of the bathrooms in town, which are not really up to what we need as a community and not really up to what Massachusetts' code allows us to bring them up to, which are gender-inclusive restrooms. I totally went off script there, so there's a couple of ground rules just for folks who are learning about how to talk to and about trans folks. So first of all, it's an umbrella term that includes everyone who is non-binary, intersex, transgender, et cetera. I'm going to use the word trans tonight because it's quick, but it includes a lot more people than just people who identify as trans. Pronouns are a human right, so please ask people for them. Please respect them and use them. I know for some people, that's really a given, and for some people, that's a brand-new idea. You may see a trans person working on this whose body doesn't match what you think their pronoun should be. So if you ask them their pronoun, they would really appreciate it. I would really appreciate it. Privacy is also a human right and a civil right, and we're a really gossipy town, which is super fun. But in this case, we would ask that you treat trans people with respect and not share medical information and not out them unless they give you consent. And then finally, the last round rule is that we're working on this project because we want to change the way that we incorporate the T part of the LGBTQ into our community. And there's a bunch of us working on the project, and we are all happy to field your questions. So I'm available. You can ask me the awkward questions and practice with me.
We realized during town meeting there'll be many more people here. And when we say feel free to ask us and please don't out other people, also, please don't make assumptions about people sitting near you. And just be sensitive to those most vulnerable. And I didn't share that my pronouns are she/her. And the reason that the petition is in my name is that I, in this instance, I'm safer. I'm less of a target. Right now in this country, there's over 800 bills before different states and federally that attack the trans community. And we in Provincetown advertise and promote ourselves as an open and accepting place and a haven for people to come. And as a business owner who prides herself on that, it doesn't feel good when it's not true and when we're behind. And to take a look at our bathrooms is to realize that we are not in fact safe for everybody. And this serves as a measure to go in the right direction and to make some very quick fixes for this summer season, and then long-term go forward and make some substantial changes that are architecturally based. It's important to remember that even in Provincetown, gender segregated restrooms can be unsafe and inaccessible to transgender people, since transgender people risk physical, verbal, and sexual victimization in whichever gender segregated restroom they enter. Inclusive restrooms are seen as a key to civil rights protection for transgender and non-binary people. This is in fact a civil rights issue, and it is a public health crisis. And Provincetown has led the way in other public health crises in terms of how we show up and take care of our community. We took care of the gay male community around HIV and AIDS and led the way. And in the 2000s and even in the late 90s, we took care of same-sex couples in terms of domestic partnerships and gay marriage. And we are currently behind here. Cambridge and Boston and Worcester all recently became sanctuary cities. There's questions about how much of that stands up to anything. But one way you can be a sanctuary is if you have a safe and accommodated place for people to go to the bathroom. Massachusetts law prohibits discrimination in places of public accommodation, including against an individual based on their gender, identity, or expression. It is unlawful discrimination, which can include refusing, denying, or hindering access to bathrooms or offering a different class or quality of bathroom or service or limited, limit the set of services available other than what's available to others. So as we look to do this, just keep in mind helpful suggestions of the few limited areas. Different isn't equal. That's never been the case, and it's not the case here.
So we don't have a budget for this project, so this is, this is an idea project right now. And it's an idea to kind of bring the conversation to town and push it forward so that we can form a budget. We're working with, so this is a citizen's petition, but we're also working with the select board and with the town managers. We have a new working group, and we're going to come up with budgetary recommendations and design recommendations and whatnot. So this is just the beginning of that. But just to kind of get your heads around what it might mean for our own facilities, we are looking at public, municipal, public bathrooms. So bathrooms, not schools, even though they're municipal, but the public restrooms in town that are like the pier parking lot, the pier, the firehouse, possibly some others, town hall, yeah, town hall. And we're asking town to kind of think about how we could meet what is really cool. The Massachusetts Building Code has been updated and allows for gender-inclusive restroom conversions. And so we're asking for the town to consider doing that. On the left in this drawing, there's just a rendering of how kind of a standard one of these might be done. And on the right is an actual built bathroom that was built by a firm in Denver. It's in a high school. It's a gender-inclusive restroom. And the basic idea is that it addresses location, visibility, and openness to create safety. And I will say, as a trans person with lived experience in Provincetown, I just want to reinforce there are a lot of assaults on trans people, even in Provincetown, even in our bathrooms, really unfortunately. So this is my attempt to say, all those creators out there are trying to pass all these laws. Let's fix home and make it a little bit better, and here's a really easy way we can do it. And if I hit the right button.
Can we get through what we were going to present and then maybe? Okay.
Could I ask you to wait a minute, and then when we're through, we'll take all the questions because we might get there?
So this is a several-step process, and one of it is addressing the physical structures that already exist. We're, yeah, yeah. I think that's great, and I think it's important, Rachel, that people feel safe to ask questions, even if they're worried about looking dumb or looking not progressive. But the truth is, in terms of human rights, we're never going to say one person's discomfort is more important than another's safety. And right now, we're talking about the safety of people who are at the most risk. So what's important to keep in mind is that a survey of nearly 37,000 US teenagers between the ages of 13 and 17 found that 36% of transgender people who did not have bathroom accommodations were sexually assaulted in the last 12 months. That's not verbal. That's not physical. That's sexually assaulted in bathrooms. What we do not find is when you make bathrooms inclusive, that violence raises. The only thing that happens is more people are safe. So I understand there's questions. I understand there's discomfort. There's going to be a learning curve and some changes. We're going to do the most we can to accommodate places, and we're going to give people options. So what you're going to see going forward is signage outside of bathrooms that exist. For example, when you come to town meeting, and thank you so much to the town hall, to Dan and Alex here for leading the way in this, because when you come to town meeting, these bathrooms right here are going to be all gender bathrooms. They're not going to be ladies, and they're not going to be men's. They're going to be all gender, and they're going to say what is available in that room. So that what is now the ladies' room will now say three stalls. And what's now over here will say two stalls, one urinal, and whether or not there's a handicap-accessible bathroom. That's because the town hall has taken this issue seriously, and so has the select board. So this is already happening. What we're trying to do here is to educate and to provide information of what to look forward to. And town meeting hopefully will be practice for all of us. And we're going to try to do our best to make people ease into the situation. It's not meant to disrupt. It's meant to help save lives. And so we're going to have really fabulous ambassadors who can't vote during town meeting. People who live in our town and participate at the Fine Arts Work Center are going to be bathroom ambassadors for town hall to help people make choices about which one they want to use. It'll still be a choice. But in terms of what's happening next, your ability to go into a men's room and somebody to respond to you, you're not safe or you can't come here, still exists in the, in the safety of your body. And you have greater privilege around that than a transgender person does. So right now, what we're doing is accommodating and providing safety for the whole community, because right now, that's not true. And so when we talk about fighting against this hate, there's two ways to look at what's happening to the trans community. So I'm talking about sexual assault of kids who are trans. And that in the last four years, as rhetoric has increased, particularly around the last election, the murder rate of transgender people has doubled. And that's true for the last five years. Every single year, it has doubled. And the 800 bills that are anti-trans that are proposed right now include one in Texas that could make it illegal to exist as a transgender person facing two years in jail. So what are chances to do? We can stand here and I can, as a cis person, talk about all the violence and danger to trans people. And what we also need to do is simultaneously celebrate and uplift that this is a part of the community that makes us all whole and makes Provincetown a better place. So there's some scary statistics here, which is why we have to take it seriously. But the other option is to exist in a more inclusive space that unfortunately currently we fall behind in. And I appreciate that this is going to be hard for people, and I appreciate that we're going to face opposition at town meeting. That's why it's good for us to practice here, because we've been nervous. Also, particularly, I'm nervous about people's phobias showing and people's hatred and discrimination showing. And to know that my fellow town members feel that way is going to be really disheartening. But what I want to be available to is the conversation and making people understand what's at stake. And so I'm trying to take and please direct any of those fears towards me, because I would most like for any trans person involved in this project to not be the target of any of that.
We're missing a slide, maybe?
There's a slide missing.
Oh, we're missing a slide. Well, I'll get that corrected, but we're missing a slide that has just a floor plan of how these bathrooms are usually converted. So it just puts this image into floor plans. Even though you can't see it right now, I'll tell you, it's a, it looks a lot like the bathrooms we have in town. And it takes, for example, the McMillan Pier Lot. It takes a bathroom just like that that has 12 stalls and uses the exact same floor plan. By redesigning it to these standards, you can fit three more stalls, including one more ADA stall. So it goes above and beyond what the ADA already requires, which is great. It also changes the flow of traffic through the bathroom, so we get a lot less people waiting in line, which in a tourist town can be really beneficial, you know, processing people through, as well as dealing with some of the safety stuff. So unfortunately, we don't have that slide. I can't talk about it, but that's all right. But if anyone has any questions about more of the design piece of this, I'm happy to take questions, or we can just let it be a conversation that you spin in your head and think about for later. Gender inclusive. Yeah, yeah, yep. Yes, and Massachusetts Plumbing Code was updated quite a long time ago. And the state has finally updated the building code to include this. So there's now an allowance for this to happen. Towns no longer have to get a zoning variance to do it. And a lot of cities in Massachusetts have done it already. Worcester's done it. Lowell's done it. Boston and Cambridge is working on it. But I also will say, we are behind. In 2006, Washington DC did this. So it's not a new conversation. It's just that Provincetown had other things to worry about and kind of forgot this piece. So we're bringing it in the hopes that we can kind of catch up with the code.
And just for clarity, so I can just jump in real quick. There's no funding attached to this article right now, so this is just building community support for the work that we're going to be doing behind the scenes. We will have to come back at a future town meeting with actual plans and something in the CIP so that voters can see what the cost will be. We have no idea what it will be to retrofit all of them, reconstruct all of them. So we will learn that as we go through the process. We'll provide updates to the select board. And hopefully, we will have something to bring at next town meeting or a special town meeting if we have one in between.
So if a bathroom is just one stall, one door, and maybe a urinal, maybe not, is that gender-neutral then? Because only one person enters it at a time. Is that be considered?
If you go into a business and it's labeled as a men's room or a women's room, by law, it is not gender-inclusive. But it's very easy to change that sign, and it can be.
Because, for instance, I'm on the water and sewer board, and we had a whole big battle with the Art Association about public restrooms way back when. And I think it's one, you know, one room. And it would be unfortunate if they, they want to get out of the public restroom thing. And we don't want them to get out of the public restroom thing because they're the only one in the East End. So I would hope that their, if their restroom is just a door and a facility inside, then that would, so long as it doesn't say men's or women's, it just says public restroom, then that's okay.
Well, and we're also talking about town-owned and operated public restroom facilities. So what's at PAM would not be covered by this. We're going to, we're going to put together an inclusive design guide to provide to businesses and to provide to other folks and other communities. But that particular restroom inside PAM is not what we're talking about here.
Yeah, it's also, this is a bigger conversation. So one of the places that if you want to dive into it, there's a great website, stalled.org, that shows images of how they make these conversions, and you could get lost in there for a while and kind of see the different ways. But as Dan said, we're looking at, the working group is going to put together a packet so that while this article addresses municipal bathrooms, public municipal bathrooms, we'll put together a packet that will also be usable by anyone who wants to participate in any of the businesses in town. So there will be more resources available. Cool. Thanks.
All right, Jonathan, I think you're up next. So you have Article 21 and Article 22?
Yeah. I'm not sure which is which, but oh, classics, Article 21. The reason I put this in about cutting plastic trim is that mostly what happens in construction sites, you'll see plastic trim, they deliver it on the front lawn of a construction site. And everybody just cuts it right there and then puts it up. And the dust is like, it's like talcum powder on steroids. It's really awful stuff. I've used it. I have some of it on my house. I've cut it inside. When you're doing a construction, which When you're doing a construction, which is a new construction, you frame out the house, you put the windows in it, you enclose the space, it's, it's an empty space. There's no finished anything in it. So to be able to just say, okay, if you're going to use plastic, carry it inside, cut it inside, and then vacuum up your mess, otherwise it ends up on the ground. Just, you know, if, that's all, I don't, I, I know it, the contractors might get pissed at this. And I don't know how you deal with a situation where someone is replacing trim in a finished house. So where do you cut it? How do you contain it? You can, they do make small tents for stuff like that, and also plastic decking. There's a lot of these materials used now. And they create this kind of dust that doesn't go away. So that's basically why I put that in there, just because it's awful stuff. The other article.
Yeah, sure.
Well, you know, the thing about metal is, is that it deteriorates, it rusts, it gets into the ground. It's not something that, it's, it's not as stable as plastic. And concrete or mortar or masonry, same thing. I sort of feel, I mean, you could get extreme about this. But it's just, that's one thing that's done outside, often you'll see it. And, you know, the contractors come, they cut the stuff up, they make the house, they're gone. And, and it's there. Well, I think that it would have to be the building department. And I don't, you know, I'm not, I mean, I'm sort of advocating it, but I'm not fundamentalist about this. You know, I feel like if it's impossible or if it's going to be too much for them, then fine, you know, it'd be unfortunate. But, but that, I think there are other options to plastic trim that are equally as good now. So, so that's that one. The other one is Article twenty two. Basically, right now, the Historic District Committee does not allow the use of hardy plant clavard except on the water side. At least it was. And I've been through this at town meeting with them a couple of times and lost every time. But when you're fighting a fire, the first thing you're trying to do is protect your exposures. And if you look out here, you'll see buildings that are three or four feet apart. We had, I put an article in and that got shot down. Then they, the town, assistant town manager put an article in saying anything within nine feet, you should be able to use hardy plant clavard. You can, you can use it on the water side, but when you have a working fire, it's the side exposures. You don't really see it when you're walking down the street. Using it on the front, I don't see that it's that, that awful to use, that it looks that bad. In fact, there was a case I knew of where two members of the Historic District Committee years ago were sitting about this far away from hardy plant clavard but didn't know it and said, gee, this looks fabulous. And then I heard, so they don't, some of the stuff they don't recognize. Class A fire-rated shingles. LA burned because of asphalt shingles. The First National Bank is concrete, but the top of it was asphalt and it burned. So years ago, Conwell sold what was a class A fire-rated artificial slate shingle. And one member of the Historic District Committee, when I mentioned it, said, I know all about it. If you're worried about your house burning down, don't live in a historic district. Well, I was at the Whalers Wharf Fire, I was on the volunteer fire department for that. And there were ten other fires started by that fire. The roof of the Universalist Church Monument Hill, when I got there, I mean, I thought the town was going to burn down. There were embers as big as softballs floating through the air. So if you have a really serious working fire here with a high wind in the winter time, well, in the winter time, you'll get mutual aid and it'll be here pretty quickly. There were twenty six pieces of apparatus and three hundred firefighters for that fire. But in the summertime, you could have scenarios, the tank is down because it's after a long weekend. So you're low on water, traffic is bad, there are other working fires up Cape. So those things that might help, I'm not saying that you have to use it. I'm just saying that they should be encouraged to use it and permitted to use it. Because towns at risk and these places all in town here, you can still stick to historic standards. But I think you can stick to historic standards and, and harden some of these buildings a little better than they are. Asphalt is not fire retardant, you're allowed to use asphalt. So I don't know, maybe asphalt's artificially, historically artificial, so they let you use it. But, you know, but the artificial slate, they use it in Ireland all the time, it's a pretty historic country. And it just would protect these buildings better. People don't know about it, they don't know that it's an option and it's not encouraged. So that's the reason I put it in there, just to hopefully open that up. Because I don't want to see what happened in LA happen here, and there's plenty of times it almost did.
All right, I think we have one final. Just two slides, right? Yeah, there's one. And maybe, you want to come on up?
Thanks, Alex, and thank you all for hanging here. I and some others are proposing Article twenty three, which would put a cap on short-term rental certificates at one thousand. The current number of outstanding certificates, based on information I got this afternoon, is around nine hundred and five. Okay, why? Well, I think almost everyone that lives in Provincetown would like Provincetown to be a very diverse community. Just heard a wonderful presentation on one aspect of maybe making some improvements on how welcoming we are. The purpose of this article is also to improve diversity in Provincetown. Diversity based on age and diversity based on income. The way Provincetown is right now, and I'm part of it, we're old. Our median age here is over fifty six. If you look at the state of Massachusetts, it's forty. In the United States, it's thirty nine. The way things have evolved in the last, you know, thirty, thirty-five years with housing getting more and more expensive relative to our incomes, maybe the best measure of diversity when it comes to age and having a nice even spread among incomes. Here in Provincetown right now, we've really got a bimodal distribution, especially after COVID. We've got a bunch of folks with lots of money, lots of wealth, and a bunch of folks that literally are struggling to get by. So three lines in this chart, I, I hope you can see them. Top one is total housing units. Middle one is occupied units. And the bottom line is year-round rental units. So going back to our earlier seasonal designation, we are right now at about fifty eight percent seasonal housing, forty two percent occupied. Like to talk a little bit about two time periods. Period from two thousand to two thousand and ten. Like everywhere else in America, we went a little crazy with building here. In that ten-year period, we increased housing by four hundred and sixty units. Interestingly, I guess, and that really was the transition, really in America, that we began to think primarily, or a lot of us began to think of housing as an investment instead of a place to live. So even though we built four hundred and sixty units, we actually had a fifty-unit decline in occupied housing in that decade, in a two hundred and eighty-five unit decline in year-round rental housing. Bringing us up to why now this idea? I, I think the two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-three experience is really important. In, in that period, we added a hundred and ninety units in total housing. And a very high percentage were occupied, a hundred and twenty-five. And given this is census data, I was going to say we lost seven more year-round rental units. But I think seven is definitely in the margin of error, the, the way we count things. And why I think it's important to bring this up right now is in that decade, we added twenty-three deed-restricted year-on-rental units at Stable Path. We added fifty deed-restricted year-on-rental units at Province Landing. And we added twenty-eight deed-restricted year-on-rental units at Harbor Hill. So we added a hundred and one units of year-on-rental housing. But on a net basis, the town gained zero. I, I guess, one way for me, I've started thinking about rental, year-on-rental units, is think of a bathtub. Think of the water level in a bathtub. What's coming out of the tap, what's filling the tub, is deed-restricted year-on-rental units. What's flowing out of the drain in the tub is existing year-on-rental units being converted to some other use. Either seasonal use, where the owner just leaves it empty, or seasonal use where the owner treats it as an investment and, and rents it. And so, how do I go to the next slide, Dan? Sorry, thanks. So here we are, we've heard a little bit about lease to locals. I think it's a fantastic program. In the first year, it's converted thirty-three housing units at a cost of less than four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into year-round rental units. We're getting close, I think, I hope, to sixty-five year-on-rental units at Three Jerome Smith. We heard about Patrick Patrick's project, thirteen units with deed restrictions there. And at Twenty-Six Chain Painter, there won't be year-round rental units, but there will be thirty ownership units with deed restrictions. So for the purpose of this slide, I estimated that in fact thirty-five would be occupied year-round, half of the ten that don't have deed restrictions. So right now, our current housing initiatives should be adding a hundred and eleven rental units. And the reason I put money in there is this isn't small money, right? These, it's millions of dollars. And hopefully, we can continue lease to locals and probably get, you know, more money involved in it. Time to go to the next one. Uh-oh, it looks a lot like the. Oh, it's my punchline.
Keep talking, maybe ask some questions and I'll try to find.
Okay, so anyway, I can go back and talk off of the one above it if you ditched that one. How do I get to the one before?
Then I'm going to try to pull it up.
Okay, awesome. So we go back to this one, pretend there's a twenty, thirty on here, right? And so if we add a hundred and eleven year-on-rental units, we end up with, what, six hundred and sixty-nine? So in percentage terms, what does that do? Well, in nineteen ninety, when we had the same number of people living in Provincetown as we do now, we had about thirty-five hundred people living here year-round in nineteen ninety. There were a thousand rental units or, you know, round numbers, actually, I know the numbers, twenty-seven percent of housing units were year-on rentals. We declined a little, as I mentioned, in two thousand, we, we crashed. To twenty-ten, we went all the way down to thirteen percent of total rental, total year-on rentals as a percent of total housing. So twenty-seven to something like seventeen, eighteen to thirteen. Twenty-three, we were down to twelve. All this time, effort, money, we're going to push up year-on rentals to fourteen percent of total housing. And I don't think that's enough. And so even that fourteen percent, adding a hundred and eleven rental units, essentially what that gives us is a best-case scenario. Because without doing something like limiting, capping short-term rentals, the drain in the bathtub is still going to be open. So we can pour in a hundred and eleven new deed-restricted rental units. But we've got nothing in place to prevent the ongoing conversion of existing year-on rentals going to some other purpose. Is, you know, is it the proverbial silver bullet? Is it going to turn us back to something that looks like the composition of housing in nineteen ninety? No, no, it's not. But if we don't start to add new tools to the effort to increase year-on occupancy, and in my opinion, the critical thing is year-on rentals, we're just going to become less and less diverse in terms of age. And I, I think that's a real crisis. Cape Cod as a whole is now a net importer of labor year-round. So if you measure people going over the bridge, there's more traffic coming over at five-thirty, six in the morning because we don't have enough working age people on Cape Cod to fill the jobs. And, you know, take that picture of Cape Cod, bring it out here. You know, I have the, you know, privilege of sitting up front at town meeting now and seeing how few town employees actually get a chance to vote. They can't afford to live here. Oh, you got it, that's it. Ah, sorry. It's, well. Please put it up there at the real town meeting.
All right.
Yeah, all you're going to see is what I just told you about. For some reason, it's not there, I don't know. Please, some questions while we wait for this to come up. And am I thinking wrong about this? Should, yeah, please.
Really quickly, my question is, I think we all get the problem. But if we're at nine oh five, why do we want to allow it to increase to a thousand? Why not capitalize less than, either at nine oh five where it's at or something less?
Right, well, I, I think, I'm a huge believer in making structural changes in our economic policies. It's, it's the only way we can live in a humane world, is if we make changes to keep up with time. But I think violent overnight changes aren't really fair. So I guess in my head, leave, leave some room, right? I, I think it's also, and I don't know if Dan or Alex want to comment, I think it's pretty well understood that there's a fair number of people that are renting property short-term without a license. And leaving some wiggle room might give them a chance. And um, leaving some wiggle room might give them a chance to come clean, i-if you will. Um, you know, because I, I think, and I, I mean this sincerely, look, we're, even in this best-case scenario, that I just described, that all 111 units that the town and Patrick Patrick and other, you know, developers on the Shank Painter project are willing to put into the marketplace. We only get to 669 if none of them go down the drain. And some will, because it isn't just short-term rentals. I'm, I'm thinking more about 2040, 2050. How can we get back to something close to a quarter of the housing stock in year-round rental? Because if, if we can't, I, I, I mean, right now, Federal Reserve does all the surveying of the American public. Only 34% of current renters in America think they'll ever have a chance to own a home. What's scary about that is last year, the number was 40. You don't have to go too far back, the number was 60. Or further still, the number was 70. So we're crashing in people's hopes about being owners. So again, if we want, I, I think, to give our community a fighting chance for a long-term sustainable future, we, we need to push short-term rentals up, but it's, we're not going to do this by 2027, 2028. I, I really am thrilled that we're going to do this investment, but we've got to recognize we're taking baby steps towards solving it and we've got to do other things. And I think one of those other things is, is limiting short-term rentals.
There is a question online, Doug.
Yeah.
Um, with only 100 certificates to spare, would not all future sales go to older buyers with more money? 600 square foot condos currently sell for 1-plus million. How much of that price is related to short-term income and how much will this restriction reduce the prices of units on the market?
Right. Well, um, what's interesting is actually the median age of home buyers in America, not just Provincetown, is 56 years of age. So old people already are the only buyers. If, I, I, I think, is this perfect? No, but that's the reality. Um, it's a very, it's a tiny minority of people in their 30s or 40s. I know I'm looking at one that bought a house out here, but everyone doesn't get a housing stipend either, you know? So it's, uh, it's, it, I, I, I guess the only honest answer I can give, we're already there, Dan. It, it really is only, um, in a statistical sense, uh, older folks that can, that can buy property out here now. One salute, or if you have parents that can give you the money.
Yeah, I think the question was just, though, if we limit the number of short-term rentals, how is that going to make prices go down so that more people can afford it?
Well, I, I think, um, it'll take time. But when you look at the inventory of uh, housing according to the census, we have 702 studios, we have 864 one-bedrooms. So that's what, 1,570 studios of one-bedrooms in town. We've got another 1,500 two-bedrooms. So about two-thirds of existing property here, in theory, could be a long-term rental. Um, and that's what the lease to locals program is trying to do, right? It's trying to transform, um, housing units that aren't being utilized to rent year-round into housing units that will be. Is it going to make all house prices in Provincetown decline? No, I don't know anything that would do that, other than you can't get here anymore. Maybe the climate will do that.
There is just one last follow-up. Would not the opportunity for short-term rental income be something that would help younger buyers be able to afford to buy a place?
Uh, depends on how much they have in the way of a down payment. Um, I, I know that's a very, very powerful narrative and I know some people have been able to use it. But I think that was probably a, a much truer reality. When house prices were 25% lower than they are now, which was probably less than 10 years ago. Our assessors could give us that data.
But so then wouldn't the opposite be true, that if you can't get a short-term rental certificate to be able to afford a home, only people who already have means and are very wealthy would be able to buy property here?
Well, I, I, I think, what percentage of people buying homes now or apartments, you can't really buy a home and, and do an STR uh, to fund it. What percentage of apartments are being bought based on penciling in significant STR income for the first three, five, seven years? Uh, uh, again, I um, I, I, I know a broker really well. Uh, and he knows other brokers really well. That number was a lot bigger five to seven years ago than it is right now. Is it zero now? No. But it is not the driver of um, migration to, to Provincetown that it was.
That's all the questions from online.
Cool. Well, it, and, but your point that times have changed is a really important one. Thank you. In the 20th century, housing was three times median income. Now it's six times median income. So yes, times have changed.
Thank you, Doug, and thanks for the questions. Um, just context on that one, and I'll mention it at town meeting. We did have a couple of citizen petitions on capping short-term rentals back in 2023. They weren't, uh, they were, I think they were definitely postponed annual town meeting 2023. And then we did call a special town meeting in fall of 2023, um, where voters enacted a cap of two short-term rental certificates per person and also ban corporations from uh, getting short-term rental certificates. Just for context, we've gone from 1,200 short-term rental certificates in 2019 down to 900 today without enacting a ban. Um, and, you know, part of the argument makes it sound as if, you know, the town's efforts to actually deed-restrict units are not adding value. And there's a big assumption that if you're not able to rent short-term or that you buy a house here, that you're going to rent year-round. And the Community Housing Council, the Year- Round Market Rate Rental Housing Trust, the boards that work every day on housing stability and security, both boards recommended unanimously against this because they failed to see a direct correlation between capping short-term rentals and actually creating year-round rental units. So, I mean, it's something that voters obviously need to consider and I think the voters just need to know in terms of the data. And what we didn't have at our disposal two years ago is the IMPACT study, the Short-Term Rental Analysis that the Donnie H. Institute did. So we have that back and then the town uh, body did adopt a couple of short-term rental specific. And we've been able to add year-on inventory through carrots and incentives rather than the opposite. And it's been trending in the right uh, direction. And even if that wasn't the case, I think a lot of folks are waiting to see direct data to suggest that if someone buys a home here, they can't rent short-term. Are they buying it to rent it year-round or are they buying it to spend a couple of weeks a, a year here? And otherwise, it's, it's empty and we don't have someone here visiting. But that's um, citizen petition, so. All right. I think that's it. I appreciate you all staying later than probably expected. Um, and appreciate those that joined us online. If folks couldn't make it, um, we are going to publish the forum. Uh, we also encourage, you know, petitioners, you have, there's about a week and a half left until town meeting. Um, you know, encourage you to get information out. Uh, we'll be getting information out about the warrant on social media. Uh, we did send a mailer out to voters to remind them to look at the warrant and some of the articles on there. Uh, and we look forward to seeing everyone Monday, April 7th. Um, always encourage folks to come in a bit early, check in. Uh, there'll be a bunch of volunteers here and look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you.